A caucus meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a couple proclamations. Start off with the Emergency Medical Services Week. If anybody's here to receive it, please join me. And I believe our former mayor, James Marshall, is with us.
Where do we go?
Say hi Dad.
For those of you who are not familiar, this is my father, one of our paramedics with the regional. Must have. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas President Gerald Ford first honored this important service in 1974, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Service Teams at Hila Regional Medical Center, EMS, are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the Emergency Medical Service System consists of: emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Service Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas Silver City and Grant County are fortunate to have the award-winning team of emergency medical professionals at Hila Regional Medical Center, serving our residents and visitors, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the medical, Emergency Medical Service Providers and the EMS Team at Hila Regional EMS by designating an Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2014, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the team EMS dedicated for life, I encourage the community to observe this week with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor and Council for honoring the true professionals that provide Emergency Medical Services in this community. This is a very small sampling. All the others are out on calls right now. But, I tell you, this is a service that you seldom value until you need it. And, last time I did a report for a 12-month period, we had 4,410 requests for service and patients that we saw in a 12-month period. So, it's a very valuable service to the community. These are the professionals that provide that, and in your times of most need, these are some of the people that'll show up at your house.
Don't be scared.
Don't be scared.
Well, you might be scared. Thank you.
I have another proclamation, and I would like to leave Stuart and Bonnie Maldonado. Whereas the Town of Silver City is incorporated to provide public services and opportunities for cultural enrichment to the community, and whereas the town's effectiveness in the provision of these services and opportunities is often dependent upon the independent vision and efforts of the local citizenry, and whereas the Seating Committee for the Southwest Festival of the Written Word, with the endorsement of the Town of Silver City's Mayor and Town Council, has initiated and completed a search for the Silver City area's second official poet laureate, and whereas this search has been completed resulting in the selection of an excellent candidate for the honorary post of Silver City Poet Laureate, now therefore, on behalf of the Silver City Town Council, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, hereby formally acknowledge, endorse, and proclaim, leave Stuart as the Silver City area's second poet laureate. And I'd also like to thank Bonnie Maldonado, who was our first poet laureate.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Councillors.
Excellent job in that position, and if you two would, both of you would like to have something to say?
You know, could we both read a very short poem?
Absolutely.
Okay, you go first. Oh goodness, I want to tell you something. I've had a wonderful time as poet laureate. Thanks to you, I've met people I never would have met, I've written about things I never would have written about. But, the last poem I read for the Gateway Continental Divide Trail event, and the Walk Off the War Warriors, I worried about what I was going to write for an invocation, and I've had more requests for copies of that than any poem I've ever written. So, here it is. "The Warrior Trail," wounded warriors, April 23rd, 2014, and these are all people suffering like from PS, PS, post-traumatic stress syndrome, and they're walking off the war by walking six months on the Continental Divide Trail. Mountain spirit dancers be with you, wisdom of Apache elders will guide you in the footsteps of their warriors. The rays of the sun will vanquish your pain, the caresses of the moon will restore you. The Mexican blue jay will scold you, and coyotes pups will entertain. Out of the dark, the cougar's scream will forever return you to the wild. An inky sky full of sparkling stars is your comforter, the milky way, your map of peaceful dreams. The stately neck up in the Indian paintbrush inhale the scent of wet creosote to bless you. The big drum of the blackfeet beats for you at Warrington Glacier, where before leaving the trail, you will embrace the universe in thanks for the gift of healing." Thank you.
Thank you for this. This is an honor, a particular honor to follow Bonnie, being a poet laureate. I'd like to work with the youth this year, if I can, with the alternative schools and public schools, and try and do workshops with them and bring some of their poetry out. That's one of my goals. And I have great enthusiasm for bringing the power of the written word out into our community. Um, I have a short poem about the Hila River. "The river can take it all. Words uttered on her banks, some from a deep place, some from a shallow one, rise, the complicated and the convenient ones, the ones not meant to hurt. Bodies holding each other, claiming love. The river, knowing it's all true right then, grinds by, allows them their moment. Later, when they walk in her waters, she holds them, awakens them with cold eddies, kisses them with small, warm pools. Her grace extends toward them eternally. She loves all, the birds that dip in to catch their food and sing to her, the insects and lizards who scurry on her banks, the fish who swim within her, and the humans with their conflicts and desires. She can take the wounded ones, the ones who hold their head in their hands looking down, even the sad ones who lie face down in her water. She turns them gently, lifting their faces toward the sun again. She does not discriminate between good and evil. She lets them take, because she has all the water within her banks to give. Does her generous nature cost her? Only if she tries to keep a piece of beauty for herself. The silky water always moving through anything that tries to hold it. Sometimes her outcomes drive the river, yet she gives all she has. The river will always run, moving underground if it must, appearing dry as a bone but still alive. She knows how to forgive any hurtful thing, any act of violence. The continuous blow, her answer." Thank you.
Next agenda on the item is Public Input. Remind you that you have five minutes to speak. We'll start with Tim Hydrick, Signal Peak, on the Signifier update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We just want to do a brief update on the Signifier up here. We've been pretty active with the team that took over as of yesterday at 1600, or six o'clock last night. They, uh, sorry, 1800. They, uh, they brought in a Type 2 Incident Management Team for this fire. It started Sunday afternoon about 3 o'clock. It was a large wind event, as we know, it was a, uh, a wind-driven fire. It started approximately a half mile up Signal Peak Road, and, uh, a lot of the column that we saw Sunday from that fire, was it running up to the top of Signal Peak. There was a lot burned area up in that. After that, it just kind of moved across through Metal Creek and stuff. They were pretty fortunate that their Type 3 engine, which is the bigger engine you see from the forest, their Type 3 had just left the Signal Peak lookout, so it was actually on scene within about 20 minutes of the lookout seeing the smoke. Uh, but because of the wind that came from that, the engine had a hard time obviously stopping that fire. Um, at now, this morning's briefing, they told us it's over on the map, and I think I gave you all the map there. It's, uh, 4,687 acres as of this morning. It is bumping up, if you see up there where it says Division E and M, it's bumping up against the old Skates Fire of 2006, so it's really slowed the intensity down there. There's a lot of dead and down material from that fire, but it's not running through it. It's kind of slowly burning up through it. Hotshot crews and, um, smoke jumpers that were on the scene, they did a really good job of establishing all the little H's that you see on your map there, from Division A through Division E, this hand line, and they really held it down in the Metal Creek area, and really kept it from running across Metal Creek. It blew out the top of Metal Creek. If anybody's been down to kind of where the road has the horseshoe crew down at the very bottom, that's where it blew out of the canyon, and then from there, it's moved around the top. But again, it's really bumping up into the old Skates Fire. Um, they did do an infrared flyover to get a better acreage of it, but it's still putting it right at about 5,000 acres. Uh, right now, there's 507 personnel assigned to the fire. Um, they're still constructing a lot of hand lines through Division Alpha, through AE and down to Zulu, around the south end of the fire, down around Signal Peak. Uh, one thing that, uh, hotshot crews and hand crews did, is they started off from the highway as an anchor point, and they punched in a hand line all the way straight up the mountain to the top of Signal Peak. And they got to Signal Peak about 1 o'clock that morning. So they were able really to secure that edge. Those guys put in a lot, a lot of hard work there doing that. Uh, we have a lot of air support on this fire. There's six helicopters assigned to it. Everything from the helicopters that fly personnel around, to the big heavy helicopters that carry water. Um, there's six helicopters, there's three air tankers. One of those yesterday was the VLATS, or the very large air tankers, those are the DC-10s flying, and they're dumping about 10,000 gallons of retardant on this fire with each drop. Uh, there's also four seats, and those are the single-engine air tankers, and, uh, the best way to describe them is like a crop duster. They can get down low and really fly in, they're really helping the crews. Uh, as of this morning, and these numbers have changed a little, there's eight engines assigned to this fire, three water tenders, eight hotshot crews, each crew has 20 people. There's eight hand crews, again, 20-person hand crews, and there's one dozer, and the dozer's working down around the Metal Creek, and reinforcing some of the roads that leave out of Metal Creek. Um, right now, the weather's holding well. We got some cooler, stable air in there helping them. As you noticed for the last two days, it's been a little cooler, but the wind's not there, so they're making some good progress. We're fixing to, uh, leave here and go to another meeting and get a better update on that. But, uh, as the week progresses, we're looking at some warmer, drier weather coming in. Uh, by this weekend, we have increased chance for a lot more wind, and, uh, really critical fire weather. But, uh, these crews right now, they're taking advantage of the weather they do have, and they're making some, some good outcome on this fire right now. So as we get more updated, we can update you guys more on that. But, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them for them.
Uh, Council, um, also what I wanted to say, please unmute Public Input, because he's trying to get on as I move. Um, by, at 5 o'clock today, um, Tim is the acting Fire Chief, has been appointed the acting Fire Chief, and Jeff Brown is now being appointed the acting Assistant Fire Chief. Okay, so he is in charge of the Fire Department.
Uh, thank you. Next speaker is Walter Semenski. Subject Voter ID.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Um, I sure like to have poems read at every council meeting we have here. That was a real nice treat. Um, I was in the audience at the April 21st meeting when my friend Peter Burrows asked you folks to consider adopting a voter ID ordinance along the lines of the Albuquerque, City of Albuquerque version. Pete said he wasn't motivated to ask about that, because he thought that there might be some fraud in Silver City or Grant County. In fact, he said he doesn't know of any voter fraud in Silver City, nor has he ever heard of any. He said the number one reason for his request was to ensure the integrity of our voting system, yet he failed to produce a single piece of evidence showing, or even suggesting, that our voting system was unsound. For a second reason, Pete cited a history of stolen elections in our country, but again, provided no concrete examples of such anywhere, let alone here in Silver City. Pete also said that a recent survey showed that 36% of people thought voter fraud was a serious issue, which he thought would be too high a number if it was only 15% of the people. Well, according to a 2013 Public Policy Poll, 15% of the US population, that's a little over 47 million people, also believe that the government controls people's minds with TV. Pete's third and final reason for asking for voter ID was that he understood it had been several years since our local voter rolls had been purged for accuracy. I don't know if that's true or not, but Pete did recite one example of someone trying to vote under the name, for example, of Mildred Clark Cousy, a deceased Silver City resident who was also known as Madame Billy. Mayor and Councillors like Pete, I am not aware of any voter fraud here in Silver City or Grant County. In fact, I think the truth is that imperson voter impersonation, impersonation on Election Day is virtually nonexistent in our country. And that's the only kind of voter fraud that a voter ID law of the type that Peter Burrows is advocating for would address. So in closing, I challenge my friend Peter Burrows to produce evidence that voter impersonation fraud has affected the outcome of any election in Silver City, or in Grant County, or in New Mexico during our lifetimes. If he does that, not only will I buy him dinner and an adult beverage of his choice at a local restaurant, I will sit down with him to see if we could jointly come to agreement on a balanced solution that does not make it harder for eligible Americans to participate in our democracy. For these and other reasons, I encourage the Town Council to continue with the voter ID requirements we currently have in place, and to reject the voter ID version of the type my friend Mr. Peter Burrows is advocating for. Thank you.
Dr. Martinez, uh, you have listed the same item. Please keep it brief, we don't need to regurgitate any of the same facts or datas, but please enlighten us with anything new.
First, I want to congratulate, very briefly, those of you who have returned to the council to continue your work, and those of you who have joined, uh, at a different capacity, I'm proud to say, and, uh, that you're here, and will, uh, continue to do the best you can to come together for good policy for our folks. Again, I'm Art Martinez, and I'm here on behalf of the Committee to Promote Democracy, and, uh, there's just no question for us that we favor democratic participation, we favor electoral pluralism anytime, anywhere. And we certainly, uh, and favor vote, instead of the constant efforts that seem to take place in different places, of sometimes a privileged political alien, to limit our sacred and our constitutional right to vote. And it is a right, and it is more than a privilege. And I've been saying in the classroom for a long time, that, uh, I think that there's been a lot of struggle to assure that it is a right, and a lot of us were out there north and south, to guarantee that we would have, have this in our country, and we would expand it in the manner we have. Now, many electoral studies in our nation have revealed time and again, that most voter ID proposals seem to either seek to introduce political impedation to some folks, or to actually bring about the disenfranchisement of America's poor, less educated, those who are marginalized, members of our minority communities, and some of our very new citizens in America. Perhaps this is why some researchers have maintained such voter ID schemes, a smack of some prejudice, or worse. Supporters of ID schemes often claim that they're simply trying to clean up our political system at all levels by eliminating quote-quote electoral fraud. We've heard some information on that. But, uh, we've seen that, uh, it's almost nonexistent across the nation, and most certainly, I agree, in Silver City and in Grant County. These are universally groundless, universally without merit. I believe, and we believe, in the Committee to Promote Democracy, and I'll push this along now, that we should remain vigilant, still, always. Because if we open the doors of electoral reform to some of these so-called reformers that we've heard from and seen, that we might embolden them to move forward later, with enthusiasm, if we open that door, with enthusiasm against the most vulnerable of our American voters, and we've identified them. The possibility of them getting a little bit carried away is not, in our thinking, as outrageous as some might think. I, I've seen some writings, commentators who have been saying, well, uh, even to go for a new voter ID, for many people who are trying to figure out how to eat and have shelter and send their children over to the school, with what they need, costs money. So we don't need people needing to go and get this and go get that paperwork and this and what have you. We don't want anyone to, uh, impose new voter ID laws anywhere, and we must hold the line today, today, here and now, and not listen to those who would do so, because where our thinking is that if we don't, uh, hold the line today, it could be that we will be very sorry tomorrow. Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor, and all of you who are present, and those who are listening to us tonight.
Incidentally, that was almost exactly five minutes. Uh, next item on the agenda is Council Comments. Councillor Bederson?
Councillor Edmondson? I just want to thank the firefighters, and want to remind everyone that our climate is changing, we're getting hotter, drier, we need to change our behavior in response.
Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I met with DOT personnel this past week, and, uh, we were complaining about the memory lane, and where's their road and everything's light, and they did change them. People have more time to go, north and south, and east and west. Also, about a month ago, I talked to the people from Alder Leopold School, and they are in the process of looking at different sites to build a school. And one of our sites is the Capia, and I did talk to Mr. Brown about it, and, um, if it happens, it happened, but we have some other sites to look at. Remember that we're gonna have a bike run, motorcycle run, here for the Blues District. Be very careful, um, I think we're gonna do a lot of participants. I think the X-Men are gonna join us also. I have great memories of tips in here. Okay, another thing is that, um, thank you, sir. Another thing is that the people around Silver City are gonna get letters, if they haven't done letters, about 200 yards. Um, it's gonna be on all districts. I don't know if some of the councils have gotten some calls, phone calls, but, uh, let's try and keep our yards to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as many of you read in the newspaper, a couple of days ago, I attended a meeting of concerned teachers and community members and parents who are worried about the Silver School District, and I continue to receive calls from, from people in my district about that, and would welcome them to continue to call me, um, to see how I can help with that. What I want to do though, is invite everyone in Silver City to attend the Silver Consolidated School District School Board Meeting, that's going to be held on Thursday, May 15th, which is two days from now, at 6:00 PM at the central office on Swan Street. I'm hoping that at that meeting, there will be some things that are cleared up, or else, um, some committees might be formed to start working on some, some projects, so hopefully people will attend that. Thank you.
Um, you know, speaking of schools and children, uh, for the third time, I, I was on the interview committee for the academic letters, and I got to interview a, a number of students at Silver High School. And, it's, it's wonderful to see how many kids, and there was about 60, 60 of those students, in the top 5% of their respective classes, who, who sought these academic letters, and, and the process they had to go through, and, uh, to apply for it, and, and get recommendation letters, and then interview with, with people in the public. These are some, some very, uh, high-character kids, and, and it, uh, it helps me believe that, that the world is safe, in spite of some of the other comments we usually like to make about, uh, our youth. So, um, you know, we, we have some, some very high caliber kids coming out of our schools, and, and I really appreciate it. And even down the road, we probably, many of us read the article where the Kobe probably, many of us read the article where the Kobe Band took the band championship for the 15th year in the last 16 years. And when I was reading and noticing that one of the big motivators that their instructor has is he places a huge importance on character on those kids. And it just shows that when we have active teachers, active parents, you know, we, these kids can do wonders. And it was real nice to be a part of that. On another note, I do greatly appreciate the 500-plus firefighters that are working on the Signal Peak Fire. It also makes me realize that as we look to enjoy our summers, let's take a lot of care and try to make sure that we're not causing any undue stress on any of our volunteers, our national, state, and local firefighters. Next item on the agenda, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Badson?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 21st, 2014.
Second, then.
We have a motion as second to approve the regular minutes for the meeting on April 21st, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Badson?
I move to approve the revised minutes of the special meeting held on May 1st, 2014.
On second hand.
We have a motion as second to approve the revised minutes for the special meeting on May 1st, 2014. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Police Department report.
Mayor, city council, I apologize. I'm going to have to stand over here and do the presentation at the same time that the meeting will be held. It'll take about 15 minutes. Can you hear me, I think?
Yes.
Can everybody hear me, I think? This is a presentation where I'm just kind of jumping into it. What I like to do is at least every quarter, you know, presentation for the city council, where I'm providing information, such as statistical, what has happened within a quarter as comparison to the previous quarter. I do have the stats for the previous quarter, which would be the first quarter for the, uh, this year, 2014, but I really can present that on the map. Silver City Police Department. This is from our department meeting that we had earlier this year. Just a picture to show our people. Now, I want to make a comment about the mission statement. So very recently, I changed the mission statement in the core values for the Silver City Police Department. I searched around, I thought ours that we had was pretty good, uh, mission statement, uh, previously. But what I do rather do is I start taking a look at the processes that we have, the policies and procedures, and start redamping or upgrading. This is probably one of the best ones, a story, a teller front, uh, allowing the codes down, which are covered in a way, because I think it fits our city extremely well. As in conversations with some of the council persons, I look at our pass so quick frequently to see what they're doing, simply because of some of the issues that have come up, the challenges. The founder list is a very good source of information, simply because they have strong department, they have a strong community audience of police, they're knowledgeable watching. So when we start that, that gives a trip to some of the information and apply it to ours, we're improved. This is what we want to make out there, and try and improve within our community. Mission statement to the police department is mission of Silver City Police Department to provide services with integrity and dedication to preserve law, to enforce the law, and work in partnership with the community to enhance quality of life within the town of Silver City. Core values, this is very important. We redeveloped our previous core values instead of short. This is, this is just an awesome core of values that they put forth and we adopted and produce with our partner. We use that one. It covers a wide variety, and it's true value of the law enforcement and trying to shake a hand with the community at large to try and develop better programs, better reinforcement, and community involvement. With respect to life, we hold the preservation of life as our sacred duty. Our values, human life, set our priorities. We view the truth. We accept nothing less than truth, honesty, and integrity in our profession. We enforce the law. We recognize that our basic responsibility is to enforce the law. Our role is to resolve problems through the law, not to judge and punish. We seek community partnership. We view people in our community as partners who deserve our concern, care, and attention. We are committed to reduce the fear of crime in our community, and we endeavor to do this by creating partnerships and adding the power. We add our police powers. We understand that our police powers are derived from the people we serve. We do not tolerate the use of our police security. We conduct ourselves with dignity. We recognize that our personal conduct, both on and off duty, is imperceptible from the professional reputation of our officer and the partner. One jumping to, anybody having questions, Dr. Strickland, for the police mission statement? I think it's well said, I think it's well put, and that's what we would have only actually put up on the wall, in about, or about four or five different walls, wonderful values. We have an apartment, the officers have to walk by it, everybody coming in and back in. This is our new budget from 2010 forward, 2014. You can see, at the grand forward, we've had an increase, with exception of ransom. Had an increase, too, up to 2013, which increased to 2.5 million in security. This 2014, it's gone up to 2.7. We can take a look at consignors and wages. We're generally running about 90% of our overall project with salary ranges and benefits. Operations is going up possibly 10% of our total project. Anybody having questions on that? Close talking to the Silver City Police Department, the attorney of prison, sworn and civilian personnel, as a deeper force, 2014, that hasn't changed, as a major force, 2014. Staff in the background, the research services, we have four, we just have six. We flattened out at the bottom. We moved a couple of administrative personnel. We only have a chief, two captains, and one with two. Civilian personnel, we have four secretaries, and one element control officer. And, um, Bob Higgins, who's our IT person, he does work mostly out of our department, but I don't include because he has his own department. Our training divisions, we allocated training card. Currently, we have 19 officers working in military services. We have one on medical, we have one in the academy, and we have one new hire that just hired in April, um, up to military. And we have two in the background. We probably don't count those till after July, George, however. Investigative services, uh, regular detectives, if you want to call them that, investigations, we have five. We have two in our narcotics investigators. Divisions and units. Administrative division, of course, our experiment, uh, sports services division, that's my PRO, that's my person that does our training, uh, has contacts, he's basically, he works, he's basically the user of the unit. Like we all, we don't have that position staff, and we're just going to have that staffing anytime soon. Hopefully, sometime in the next fiscal, whatever, particular. So sports services is an important position, uh, that, uh, same base. My sports services is an important position that doesn't have to be the control officer, but he was a civilian person because of the job that they do. We like to use, uh, uniform personnel to fill that position, simply because when they show up in public and they wear uniforms, they show up at meetings, they work for, they represent their authority. Uh, well, having said that, when we don't have that position filled, administrative personnel have to pick up, when some of the areas are not, uh, very high priority. Uh, one of the things that we're lacking in, like well, is giving information out to the public. That's the only thing that we're getting out to the public, like well, is our daily use of a lot of information, which is doing the activities that are clear within our program. Uh, that's putting bullet papers, sending out to bullet papers, and outlines, almost every call that we hear, uh, some calls that we don't put traffic starts on, we don't use, uh, other activities. Health services division, I talked about that investigative division, this is the actual division. Specialty units for the department is we have special weapons and tactics team. We work in the, actually, through Kelly earlier, but called upon, uh, it's our SWAT team, uh, those. I'm restoring what SWAT knew, uh, that's what they do. Uh, special weapons and tactic team, works with Kelly, sometimes, uh, willing the county team, you know, as Kelly officers on all operations, and vice versa, so we work well in the agency. Our SWAT team is a selective traffic unit, responsible, we don't start , we don't start, it's not, we don't. Uh, there, the SWAT team is going to use that in, uh, enforces traffic heavily, but also, uh, impacts or high-profile areas. It's a special unit that we put to deal with specific issues and care. Well, health services is handling, and I'll get to that later. In terms of press, investigation team, uh, anytime we have a tally or very serious crash, injuries, we'll call them out, and they'll do the investigation on that. Uh, impact team used periodically, uh, which is, uh, what we do is entirely with Kelly, and also take some of the officers in the impact specific areas that we have to issue such a problem with. Last year, we impaired harm, uh, we tackled with shell assault on San Francisco East from the impact. Those are all we can say, but also we understand it, we're still doing it, very carefully. Uh, so it works partnership, but it works well, we do, uh, well with each other. Internal affairs division, narcotics investigation division. Our narcotics investigation division is all we pay for doing. Although we are, uh, we're the South Coast Border Task Force, which is located in the, um, we, we manage, uh, a lot of funds to do our narcotics investigation. Last year, we did, uh, Bay of Lando, I mean, it was 32 individuals, rest of all. Uh, we have additional information for the, uh, presentation, uh, for narcotics investigations and stuff. Black collar ports, uh, sex child, other than use, uh, we have one investigator that sounds like a black collar port, we have one investigator that sometimes two or three are another, uh, complacent, uh, and sex child, or other than use. Competence and training. Um, but lots of the talent, that is sort of how it goes through, uh, periods, eight to twelve, so that it has true, uh, that it's actually how, uh, and system, uh, training, outlines, et cetera, that they have to, that's each step, uh, of the things that, uh, that we're doing. We are fully aware of training requirements through the South Coast, uh, state administration, uh, safe pursuit, uh, that's our street, which is, uh, when you look at that, you know, there's a street, you get spot, other than that, you have those, you get spirit tells, that's what I'm saying. One over, missing person, we show child safety, pay for mental impairment training, that's a big one right there. Uh, if you listen to some of the issues in Albuquerque, that's what you can get there. Uh, but we more strongly, uh, push folks, not the domestic violence, uh, all kinds of motor vehicles, which is our training vehicles, and our field bikes, uh, child use, and parkers. Mini mouse training, we got violence, uh, safety training, ship training sessions, there's a fifteen boat training sessions that we provide, uh, supervisors with specific subjects to teach, and each, uh, ship, uh, less group or fast group, that we shift, uh, changing shifts. Defensive tactics, that's where we're doing musical horses and, uh, throw a tigger somewhere, uh, from the state of Mexico, uh, push, both those three guys and give it to us. We try to do a little bit of that, uh, code laws, the chain, the case laws, uh, about a new sex law. Advanced training, that's your survival, uh, various criminal investigation courses, such as, uh, events that are using interrogation, uh, crime scene, uh, prep, uh, active reconstruction, it's a couple of options that, uh, we can bring up, uh, crashes, but reconstruct, uh, we don't have to reach out, you know, people are specialists, uh, coming in. Learning money, introduction courses, uh, that's our introduction courses for the officers of work group, uh, highly try to detect the, uh, serial drugs in the neighborhood, that just, uh, first-hand supervision classes, policy administration, of course, maybe application, like, uh, instructive development, also survival. Uh, and we actually have several different courses in state of Mexico that we have, we try and get answers, that we have to do. Uh, various criminal investigation courses, talk about that, we have the EPL National Health Association course. There are two of those that work on, see, the EPL National Health, who's the master trainer of course, uh, the curate, they have the pressure courses, we also take other officers, workers to, uh, get a specialized training that they have. Then also, we have, one time, many, 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 uh, safer Mexico, which is a operation that, uh, we have a booth at night, uh, operation, Bapalero, and, uh, family from Texas, uh, where we're, and doing, well, well, that's probably two, four times, uh, Texas during the day. So those are the, 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 and, uh, we take care of. Uh, one more from here. Uh, this is probably, uh, one of the most important portions of this presentation, where I'm, has moved, took some of the comments, uh, and, uh, showed some, uh, tools to, you know, especially, you know, the citizens, uh, observed, uh, some, uh, tools to, you know, press that, that, uh, citizens, uh, observe, uh, following a few certain buildings or participating in this. And I've configured our programs, which are a balance of major success, such as direct patrol, traffic enforcement, high power, and traffic, maintaining targets, like jurisdiction of impact teams for special issues. With all our very own things, including teaching and develop lectures in schools, we have been, we are, uh, all the schools, uh, all officers come in, uh, do presentations closely. Continuing development, national programs to keep the public included, support services. Fitness and contact, well, I just got, uh, a post stack done today, uh, went through those, but most part of the project, uh, is a two-time, catch-up specific, we work happily, uh, for the, uh. Customer service survey, uh, customer, in a small, uh, motion, that, after that was a good idea, uh, curiosity, what we do previously, is pick up a whole car, uh, individuals who stop our officer, just as a quality check, uh, the curiosity, we, all the recordings, the recordings of our officers, uh, traffic stops, insurance, uh, transport, and, uh, negotiations. So, what we're going to do with this customer survey, this is, we put together a field, uh, Thomas complete, we put it on the website, and, uh, everybody can check that out, and they'll connect to us, and they can email it to me, my email address is, uh, we'll also be mailing yourself to, um, then we selected in bridge words, just to try this out, feedback, uh, the contact with this.
Uh, lectures, instructions, story, I tell you, we told you, that your customer has phone number, he's doing with his phone number, we also have, uh, a program that we would like to issue, that she has registered by, uh, possible, uh, we do kind of a process to, we're going to, uh, put those in, there are phone contact messages, and we have information that we can. Most people don't keep their serial numbers, in investigation, we mention very high level, uh, national file information, uh, even that, you know, the, the salaries have been a key, their serial numbers, uh, serial numbers to keep, serial numbers to track , but you can keep, it's extremely important, so that we can protect them once it's safe. Uh, protesting, pretty invested meaning, uh, which is why this conversation, continuing push for development of neighborhood watches. Going back to our council, our council committees programs, they're all the five units, cross board that they have, their primary unit is, uh, they have very well in control. Having said that, uh, we also have, uh, police officers, uh, however. The national average is that, due to, uh, stopping of blowback national average, with their success, if you take a look at, uh, what they're, they're successful at, is having very strong, very good watch, uh, leadership with their structures. We're part of, with community, we're part of, with the neighborhoods, we're building it, uh, as an example, uh, we just have a, a large, uh, network that we do, and show everybody this, with that, uh, control, because of participation by the, uh, citizens, we were able to find more people than we had, who were in charge of, uh, winter, June, just on, during June, uh, the, we, that's, uh, that, uh, um, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just didn't talk about animal control. That's under your jurisdiction, is it not?
What?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't listed anymore.
Looking for statistical evidence, you know?
No, no, I just wanted to know, um, I believe it was last year, Alex can correct me, that the, that the council put in additional funds for an animal control officer in the budget?
Yes, and that was one of the positions with, uh, part of, five, six, seven, eight, nine positions that were, were frozen in the room because of the lack of ready, coming in.
Just, just wanted to, I mean, if anyone remembers that, I just wanted to make sure it was explained, but I just, I didn't notice it, Chief, in your list of, um, different departments and divisions within the department, it didn't.
I don't know if I have it more.
Yeah, no, I mean, so, but it's still one of the special departments or units?
That's the main mention of, uh, need to that, I can do a presentation on the control lecture, uh, animal, uh, controllers, uh, but having to say that, um, we work through a series of, uh, expensive hiring, and trying to hire qualified, ready, they're definitely that position, uh, I think that you see hiring processes, you just, you have, uh, hiring for, uh, down at the, um, it wasn't, um, people who, who fit in without, uh, yeah.
Plus, it seems that it's one of those ones that was frozen, um, since we didn't receive, uh, I mean, the receipts without, we would correct, Alex.
Yes, sir.
But thank you, Chief, I appreciate it, it was a really nice presentation. And, um, your mission and, um, values, it would be nice also, maybe, to have on the front side house, where the public comes in and sees what your officers see, um, that they know that the officers are seeing that, but, you know, when you come in, the public can come in through that front door, it'd be nice to see the, the mission and values in there too, for everybody just to, it's sort of a reminder to the public too, what, what your department is all about, and I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I think that, uh, us in this, not only is put about here, um, we have very well up the standards and financials and, uh, services, uh, and quite frankly, I couldn't tell you about the sport, the cancer, and sport, and city, uh, and how we need to put processes in place, and, and develop programs, and, and, uh, that's what's worked well, and I appreciate that very much.
I just wanted to mention that I was, um, actually, one of those individuals that had their mailbox hit, along with, uh, other people, and I actually heard it, but didn't see anything, um, that the officer that, um, did, uh, come and take my information and that my neighbor was very gracious, and, um, you know, said that, that they were trying to catch him, so it sounds like you, you caught him, and appreciate that, for driving down the road and seeing how many had been damaged, I didn't realize how far they'd gone in my neighborhood, so, but thank you.
Counselor Connor?
Um, hey, first, if I get asked why, hopefully you can address both of them, because I don't know the answers to them. Um, the first one is, I know that there's some kind of a partnership with the other municipalities, that your officers can give tickets, like, between, there and Hurley? And, and people have, have asked me, why are the police are going out that far when there's volunteers here? So, are you getting set? Okay.
Like you know, the last time, many, many, that one was, which was actually, what happened was, as you knew, of course, we were, we had, we had to call, but that many, many teams, uh, in front, uh, in the state of Arizona, uh, that allows for, uh, overtime operations by department, we're not doing, speaking, second, that allows for overtime operations, uh, in, uh, the next state of Arizona, and I believe there's other states in Georgia, uh, but, the specific purpose behind what we're doing is to partner with the local sheriff's office with fast mission, to do, uh, high rate mediation, uh, outside the city limits, we're trying to keep it within fifteen miles, uh, to the, to the, to the city, uh, there, there was a lot of conflicts, I'll be quite frank with you, there was, there were a few conflicts, I got one, uh, but the local sheriff's office, the mission, just, just get a sign, uh, so, what happened was, we brought that back into the city limits, and just do the operation within the city limit, so we, uh, left them to let themselves, uh, go to the west, and, and, these just the operation area, for, uh, pursuing the community station. What the purpose is doing, uh, the clue, was that we wanted one path, with this, uh, uh, funding, was the money flow from the south, uh, back to the border, uh, from the cars, et cetera.
And I think, Chief, that, we should call them off-highway vehicles, you know, in my district, half of the district has issues with kids on four-wheelers, and the other half have issues with, um, a senior citizen in a golf cart, so, what can be done, I mean, do you just need to be calling, or?
Um, we all kind of, many vehicle, uh, four-wheelers, et cetera, uh, all we need to do is call, uh, central dispatch, contact central dispatch, the similar to, uh, the programs on, and hopefully capture, because it's, you know, there are specific rules, and if you'd like, I can really clear, uh, those pertaining to that, uh, from this council meeting, and also, uh, want to close, some of those want to close without, uh, so, for others, I'll just bring that through.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, just to, just to get back to that anti-money laundering alliance, um, that, those, those were grant funds, and those were officers that were basically off-duty and getting paid for their overtime through the grants, correct? It, it didn't take away from any of our local operations?
No, it, it was not from, uh, uh.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to comment.
Counselor Madison?
I want to thank you, Chief, for, um, helping and really including, community-oriented policing, and working with various citizens groups, and I'm particularly happy to hear about the customer satisfaction survey, and I think that will bring you some interesting information as it gets out to different people, thank you.
You only used half your time?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time.
Other staff reports?
No, he did one.
He, he took your time, and you're, you're, you're good with that? Any other staff members? You good? Counselor Edison?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I may for a short break.
We have a motion in a second for a short recess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we're in recess.
I'll call this meeting back to order. Uh, next item on the agenda is new business, A, approval, disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number twelve twenty-eight, authorizing the issuance of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico Gross Receipts Tax Improvement Revenue Notes, Series twenty-fourteen, in two series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed, uh, one million five hundred thousand for the purpose to, one, finance acquisition and construction of certain, um, capital improvements for the benefit of the town and its residents, including, but not limited to, public safety equipment and public recreation facilities, and two, pay cost of issuance of Series twenty-fourteen notes.
Um, very helpful, uh, this is, uh, the most of the time, to start the process, to start looking at the finance of, um, of, of some projects that we've been talking about for, for quite a while, um, and, uh, those projects are, um, are the, uh, fire, um, the ambulances or medic units for the fire department, we did get a hundred and five thousand, uh, dollars from the legislature for matching funds for that project, uh, we are looking at the acquisition of, uh, ten police vehicles, uh, we're also looking at the, um, the construction of the concession restroom area, and that would be the final phase of the Scott Park complex, and, um, we did receive a hundred and, I believe, a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the legislature for that project, uh, so, what we will be borrowing is just, uh, the final construction and purchase money for the fire vehicles. We also are looking at, uh, the construction of the clubhouse at the golf course, and, um, you know, there's, there's different reasoning between, for each project, um, one is, um, you know, we do need to maintain and, uh, upgrade our emergency equipment, uh, we have been working on the, uh, Scott Park Golf, I mean, Sports Complex, um, I mean, that, that, that facility has been, uh, is a huge, it's been used by so many different, so many people, and, you know, uh, in the last year, I believe there's, um, soccer, the soccer, youth soccer league has seven hundred participants, uh, Little League has forty-three, uh, baseball teams, uh, U triple S A has, um, forty, uh, baseball teams, uh, there's multiple, uh, uh, tournaments at those fields, so they actually have an economic, they are an economic driver, as well as, you know, the university is even using them. Uh, so, we're right now working on the lights, so that we, that was phase two, so that we could get, uh, more time of, of the day usage out there, but, uh, we also do need the, the restrooms, and we've got to get rid of those porta-potties in that temporary, uh, uh, concession stand. Uh, the clubhouse, the town does own the, the golf course, so it will be a facility that is owned by the Town of Silver City. Uh, for those of you newer on the council, the town, uh, leases, uh, to a management company, uh, of owners, the owners of, who are local golfers in the community, um, the lease does not allow them to take a profit from the operations, so, uh, all the profits go back into the, uh, the golf course, but, the problem is, it's expensive to operate a golf course, and I don't want to take it back over, so, you know, what we would, I'd like to do, we, we're working on is, is the construction of a, of the clubhouse, which we've been working on for a little while, and that clubhouse will, will, uh, contribute some additional revenue, not just during the warmer months of the year, but it also contribute a, a revenue stream during the colder months, when there's really not much golfing, so the, the facility will continue to get funding throughout the entire year, so the community will get paid back over, over, over time, and, you know, I don't think there is one, um, one recreation or, or public facility that is, that pays for itself fully, and, uh, but we want to make them as self-sufficient as possible, so that we don't have to subsidize them as, as much, so we can provide services elsewhere, of course. And this is Chris Muirhead, he is our, our bonding attorney, and, uh, please go.
Thanks, Alex. Uh, my name is Chris Muirhead, I'm with the Model Spurling Firm in Albuquerque, members, the new members of the council, let me just give you a quick overview of what our role is, is we are, uh, specialists in public finance, uh, borrowing of public funds, use of public funds, uh, dealing with state statutes that govern the issuance of debt, uh, dealing with the Internal Revenue Service and the federal side of things for tax-exempt bond, uh, tax-exempt interest on bonds, uh, and to the extent applicable, and it's not so much in this deal it is, but, uh, with the Securities and Exchange Commission as it relates to the securities. So, the, the ordinance that you have in front of you, the, uh, what that does, it's called a parameters bond ordinance, and what it does is sets a maximum par amount of a million and a half, uh, and a maximum interest rate of twelve percent, under the current market conditions, you wouldn't come anywhere near that, uh, but that's a maximum state statute, and we would come back, assuming that you adopt this at the, when it's up for consideration, with a subsequent resolution that sets forth the sale terms, uh, of the bonds, in terms of, here's the interest rate, here's the final par amount, here's the purchaser, um, to give you an idea on the purchasing side of it, um, in talking to the town's financial advisor, I don't think that, that he is looking to publicly market these, where you would sell them on the public market, I think he's looking for a private placement with a, a state bank for, through the New Mexico Finance Authority, that'd be the most cost-effective way to do it for an issuance of this size. Uh, the key parts of this ordinance are, uh, the most important thing is, it limits your pledge for repayment, in this case, it's the state share gross receipts tax, which is your strongest credit, which will get you the lowest borrowing cost. Uh, the important fact there is, if at any point, uh, the town is unable to meet its debt service requirement- debt service requirements, a, you know, highly unlikely event, but if it were, the lender would have no recourse against your property taxes, any other gross receipts taxes, any other system revenues or enterprise revenues. It's only the state shared gross receipts tax that there's a lien against. It doesn't prohibit you from using other legally available funds to pay the debt, that's just the, the pledge that is, uh, against the, uh, against this particular debt. Uh, as Mr. Brown said, the project is broadly defined in the ordinance to be for capital improvements, including but not limited to the public safety equipment, the, uh, wellness facilities in the town, uh, and the golf course. It does provide for the possibility of a taxable series and a tax-exempt series, the tax-exempt series being at a lower borrowing cost historically because those would be for governmental purposes and there is the holder of those bonds. Uh, the interest earned is not subject to federal taxation or state taxation. However, there are considerable requirements to comply with that and limitations on what those purposes can be and, uh, the potential to have a private lessor or lessie of the, uh, golf facility. Uh, it's much easier to do that as a taxable component and remove the headaches of trying to make sure that you're complying with everything to keep that as a tax exempt and considering it's a small portion of the overall project, that seems to be the most efficient way of doing it. It would have, I think, a minimal impact on any borrowing costs you might have. So in short, uh, the introduction here tonight is, is, uh, just to get this on your radar, see it going before, publish a notice of meeting. Um, this, if you consider it the next meeting, is, is a considerable step in the sense that you're approving, uh, the sale of the bonds, but you would have the subsequent resolution where you could approve or disapprove what the final terms are. These are, uh, on the positive, very, very, uh, good, a very good time to be borrowing money if that's your purpose due to the extremely low, historically low interest rates currently for governmental borrowing.
Also, I'm working with our financial advisor, um, we've come up with some preliminary numbers for the cost of the debt service for, um, if these were issued, and, um, that has been included in, uh, the preliminary budget. Uh, what, what we have, what, what has happened, uh, this year is that, um, back in two thousand eleven, uh, we issued, um, two bonds. One, uh, the two thousand eleven A, which were the, the large bonds for new projects, uh, multiple projects, which the major one was the, uh, Scott Park Complex, and we issued the two thousand eleven B bonds, which were refinancing of three different loans. The two thousand B is being paid off this fiscal year. So what we're doing here is we're maintaining a current level of debt service that we've had over the last, uh, about eight years. And that is what we're doing is we're trying to stagger our debt and maintain a static level of debt service. Um, for instance, um, using the estimated numbers, uh, the current year's debt service is about one point two million, uh, one hundred and change. Uh, this one, uh, with this included would be one point two million, one hundred and about, it's only about eight thousand dollars difference from last year's debt service. And we also included in this year's debt service, the increased debt service of, um, the... the tenuous.
The refueling station.
Oh, the refueling station and the lights, uh, that, that we did, uh, this last year. And those were added and those, those were accounted, accounted in, uh, uh, the next budget. We've already started making some payments on them, but, uh, comparing, uh, last year's budget to this year's proposed, uh, we, the debt service would be very close to what it was last year. So we wouldn't have, have to apply any larger percentage of the budget, uh, towards the payment of debt, we would just be continuing to replace and move forward. Um, and, and, and I think we're looking about every three years, uh, paying off additional debt so that we can continue to replace and, and look at different projects.
Mr. Muirhead, you, you, you began the discussion giving a little bit of a process, but, uh, just to clarify the process, this is a notice of intent to bring the discussion up to, to public input and public discussion here in, uh, probably no sooner than thirty days, probably no sooner than two, two, uh, meetings from now. Uh, this has the potential for being read in its final form, which sets an ordinance. It's at that point that we have the opportunity to have a resolution to execute the ordinance. And without that resolution, we just have an ordinance that goes nowhere. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is, uh, is correct. So today, just to give you the background and authorize the, the town clerk to submit the notice of meeting for, you're right, it's the June, the early June tenth, June tenth meeting, and this ordinance would come before you at that point for a public hearing, full debate, um, at which point you could decide to go approve it, which would require a three-quarters majority, a supermajority, or decide, no, you don't want to approve it. If you approve it, that's still not your last bite at the apple. What that would do then is the financial advisor, once they have that approval that you're comfortable with the project and, and going forward, would go market the debt and find the best lender, whether it's a local bank, some state bank, the New Mexico Finance Authority, whatever it might be, and then would come back at a, either the next, the last meeting in June, first meeting in July, with a resolution that lays out, here are your borrowing terms. This is, here's your annual payments, here's your interest rates, here's everything that you would be asking if you were refinancing your house, benefiting or buying a car, what, what are my terms? That would be in that resolution. If you approve that, then we would be moving toward closing the transaction in late July, the money would be available about that time. So, Mr. Mayor, you're correct, that's kind of the, the timing. Today is informational and a, and a little bit of a go-ahead.
Okay. Any questions? Uh, Councilperson Edison?
Well, Chris, well, thank you for your presentation, and, um, you've been here before us, for those of us who've been on the council before, and the town has always been very successful. I mean, we're well-run, fiscally, well-fiscally managed, um, so that unlike other municipalities that may have difficulty, we have yet to experience that in the sale of bonds, whether it's a private sources or as a public offering like we did with the two thousand eleven A. Um, and so, um, I think the, just wanted to comment for the general, uh, public and for the residents that by maintaining the debt, um, at static level, we're able to continue to, uh, rehabilitate, renovate, um, and offer more services, um, in certain areas by doing that. So, um, I want to say thank you to, um, our financial staff for keeping us on track because we wouldn't be able to move this forward without them and the excellent work that they do, um, in, in ensuring our budget moves forward and, and looking at what the next projects are that are going to benefit the public. Um, not only the folks that live in town, but the folks that visit and participate using the facilities that will be, um, developing or renovating and expanding, so. Plus, um, I just want to say in terms of the police vehicles and, um, we really need them. As we know from, how many months ago did, was that presented? Um, during the public safety tax when that was coming up, we heard how our police vehicles are sorely, um, outdated. And also the fact that we needed two, um, new ambulances. Is it two that we're doing, correct? So I guess, um, this meets the, some of the things that we've been talking about as a council, um, and meets the needs of, uh, residents of the town and those who visit us, because you never know who might need to use an ambulance at any given time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Would anybody in the public like to talk on whether we should continue this and add this to the public debate? Dr. Martinez?
Yes, pertinent to this, I think it is about time, uh, that the Committee to Promote Democracy, uh, express openly to everyone here in, in the public that one of the positions that the Committee to Promote Democracy has and will continue to press for is that within reason, any new, any new ordinance that proposes to bring about a brand-new tax upon our local residents for a substantial sum of bond money or whatever, have incorporated into the actual formal agreement a sunset clause that defines a specific timeframe upon which the given tax will lapse. And they're doing this across the nation, and we're not asleep here in great county.
No, it's, it's a good comment and it, it brings up a, a good dialogue. This is not, um...
Well, I don't know... It is enough.
No, no, I, I...
Well, this actually uses, like, some government, the government's success that has been imposed since nineteen eighty, I believe? Or has been placed since nineteen...
This is broadly delivered in its, uh, idea and into the future for us, and, uh, I, I think it's, uh, something to be seriously considered.
Thank you. Um, what is the duration of, of the bonds that were, that this is being discussed?
That, it, that is actually still part of the terms. Um, I think, uh, it, given the useful life of a police vehicle and the ambulances, that the debt needs to tie to how long you're going to have the capital improvement. So on the one hand, you might have buildings and, uh, significant capital improvements that have a long useful life of twenty years or more. Uh, police vehicles have a useful life normally of three to five years, ambulance is a little longer. So the debt needs to tie that you're paying off portions of it consistent with when the capital improvements are falling out of service. Um, I don't know if Mark has talked to you about specific terms?
Yes, that's, that's how we, we, it's tiered to, to coincide with a useful life of three years for the police vehicle, seven years for the ambulances, and the maximum term of the, of the debt is ten years. Even though the buildings, uh, concession and the, and the club will last much longer than that, we're, we will not go any farther up than ten years.
And, uh, we, we just paid off the two... We're, we're paying off the two thousand eleven B, is what you mentioned. So what, uh, what this, uh, philosophy is doing is as these bonds get paid down, before there's ever any new debt, we have to bring it to the public for discussion and, and at that final resolution, the, going back to the, um, the steps that would be taken at that resolution time, there would be also further debate on the duration and, and what we would be obligating our citizens to, the length of time that they'd be paying, um, for the, the products and, and goods that they'll be purchasing with that.
Yes, and, and those have been our preliminary discussions, as, you know, Mark and, and Chris do know, and I will know that, you know, when we're borrowing money, they're only, you can only borrow money for between three, five years for police vehicles, ambulance is a little bit longer, like he said, and then, you know, the actual buildings couldn't go farther than the ten years, but I don't, because we're trying to tier our, our debt so that it's paid off and, and we make, we open some of that static, uh, number of one point two million, uh, is that we hit that ten years and by that time, we'll have freed up, um, well, within the next few years, we, we will free up some, and within ten years, that gives us another opportunity to issue additional debt and, and those types of things and, and, um, and so, you know, it's, it's, it's a...
I had this one big test that ties back to the councilor's comments, which is, one of the things, if you were to get these bonds rated, which is not the, the, the point here, but any lenders looking at or rating agencies looking at is how quickly you're paying your debt down, how, how fiscally conservative are you when you're borrowing? And so a ten-year term for these capital improvements would be conservative, that impacts your borrowing costs because you're not extending it too far out, it impacts your liquidity and your ability to do future capital projects. So this all ties together, um, and the prior debt, um, how that structure ties into the looking forward, and that's why you have Mr. Valdezuela and what Alex's good work is, to kind of look ahead, um, as, when you're making these plans. And so this debt, you know, if you want to move forward, is structured in that, with that in mind.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other, in the public? Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilperson Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do think it's really important to, um, which has already been discussed by Mr. Muirhead and also by the mayor, that, um, this is a currently occurring, what we're paying this with state shared gross receipts tax that is one point two-two-five percent. That was actually enacted, I think, in the seventies, but then changed a little bit, some of it, because it goes back to N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, which was established then, but I think it, so series of, it was adjusted over the years, but this is something that each municipality gets, so it's not that we're actually bringing forward any sort of, um, new, uh, G R T, gross receipts tax. This is, it's...
This was actually part of the, the very first increments of gross receipts tax that were dedicated to the municipality's...
Yes, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we're completely clear that we're not doing that in the fact that the way it's structured, as Mr. Muirhead's pointed out, no other, um, receipts that we receive would ever be affected if something happened where the town were not able to pay. It would only be this portion, it would not be any of the others, including the public safety tax that recently passed, would not be endangered, would not be used to pay this. So, um, and...
To, to add to that, um... So this is a tax that we've had for decades, and it's just, and it's a state shared money that, that we receive, and what we're doing, what we're looking at is, uh, using financial tools to maximize the benefit of those receipts to our citizens so that we can, uh, give them the most bang for their buck for, for those, for that one point two-two-five percent, uh, gross receipts that we collect in town. We want to leverage it and, and maximize the benefit to our citizens.
Yes. I, I think over the last few years, basically, what we've been doing with our debt is we've been spreading it amongst our different increments of, of gross receipts taxes, uh, the state shared being the, the largest, and, and the reason being is because with the state's attitude of tearing into, taking into our whole harmless, you know, constitutionally, they cannot prohibit our, I mean, um, for the car to, um, hinder our ability to pay our debt, and, and that's why, why we're, we're using different shares every time we, we've talked about one of these different things, and this being the largest one. It's primarily used for operations, but, you know, we're, we're just saying that we're using this to secure the debt, you know, we're going to spread, uh, for instance, the fire, uh, the, uh, ambulances, uh, we've already got permission to use the protection money to pay the debt, that portion of the debt. Uh, so, you know, we are using different portions of, different sources of revenue, even though this is the dedicated, uh, revenue stream.
So in other words, we're, we're dedicating this piece to secure it from the state because the state's history of trying to take back what they've given us?
Yes, that's what we've, that's what we've been doing.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilor Edison?
Uh, I have a question and I make a motion. If that's, if it must, okay. I'm going to approve notice of intent ordinance number twelve twenty-eight, authorizing the issuance of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico Gross Receipts Tax Improvement Revenue Notes, Series twenty-fourteen, in two series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose to, one, finance acquisition and construction of certain capital improvements for the benefit of the town and its residents, including but not limited to public safety equipment and public recreation facilities, and two, pay cost of issuance of the Series two thousand fourteen notes, providing that the Series two thousand fourteen notes will be payable and collectible, firm and secured by a pledge of, one, the gross receipts tax distributed to the town pursuant to section seven dash one dash six point four, N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, as amended, um, the state shared gross receipts tax, providing for the disposition of the receipts derived from said tax proceeds, providing that the certain terms of the notes will be provided in subsequent resolution, prescribing other details concerning the notes and tax proceeds, including but not limited to covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and the form, terms, conditions, and manner of execution of the notes, ratifying all action previously taken in connection therewith, and repairing ordinances in conflict herewith.
Thank you. I will second that as simply.
We have a motion in a second, uh, to approve the ordinance as read into the record of the notice of intent. Excuse me. of the Notice of Intent, excuse me, uh, for ordinance number 1228, as read into the record. Is there any further comment or discussion from the council? We have a motion in a second for approval of Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1228, as read into the record. I don't want to repeat it. Roll call. Let's go ahead and do it anyway.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Councilor Adam Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 2014-15, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a Colonial's Infrastructure Project Fund Loan Grant Agreement and Intercept Agreement by and among the New Mexico Colonial's Infrastructure Board and the New Mex, New Mexico Finance Authority and the Town of Silver City, in a total amount of $361,306, evidencing an obligation of the town to utilize the loan grant amount solely for the purpose of financing the cost of construction of a sewer lift station to intercept the sewage flow at F Street and construction of a new pressure sewer line from the lift station along F Street.
Mr. Mayor? This is a resolution authorizing the, uh, the... It's hard to, okay. Back a year ago, the town was awarded a grant through the Colonial's Infrastructure Grant Program for this project, for the F Street, uh, lift station. Uh, the, the way that the Colonial's Infrastructure Board has, has, um, set their rules is that all the grants must, um, you, you can submit, uh, in-kind or matching funds, but they require you, for, for whatever reason, to borrow 10% of the grant proceeds. Now, we've already put $72,000 into this project for the design and engineering. We do not need the $36,000, but we have to borrow it just to get the grant. So we, 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 we plan on, uh, the project is ready to go out to bid. Uh, once this grant is executed, we plan on awarding it. And, and, cause once prep, construction is complete, we plan on repaying the $36,000 immediately. Uh, it is, it, it, it will be available, uh, but, um, primarily, we've already done the, the final design. We've got the, the, uh, the, uh, bid package, uh, ready. We're ready to go out to bid for this project. And, um, you know, it's, it's taken, this, this grant was awarded to us in March of 2013. And here we are in May of 2014, finally moving forward with this project. So, so, you know, we, we may need the $36,000 because of inflation.
Any questions, uh, Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do have a question. I don't remember having to do this before.
This is the first time we've ever had to do it?
So this is why it's taking so long for Colonial's grants to be, um, to go through the system with this new, we must, we must actually get a loan for 10%. I mean, we're required to.
Yes, actually, most of the... This grant has been, it's, it's, it's new, so that it's, it's very, it's very problematic for most communities. Um, the, you know, this, we're, we're seeing this type of thing from, from a lot of our grants that we're getting, having to bring them to, to the council for multiple reviews and then sending them back to their lawyers. The lawyers are making a lot of money off of all these grants. Um, so, um, yes, this, this is the first time we've had to do something this way. It is, it is very confusing, because we are, we don't want to borrow the $36,000, but we have to.
So we might get a part of that. No, thank you. And I don't envy, um, Councilor Ray reading the page.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilor Ray?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move to approve a Resolution Number 2014-15, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a Colonial's Infrastructure Project Fund Loan Grant Agreement and Intercept Agreement by and among the New Mexico Colonial's Infrastructure Board, CIB, and the New Mexico Finance Authority, and collectively with the CIB, the lenders, blenders, and the Town of Silver City, the borrower, grantee, in the total amount of $361,306, evidencing an obligation of the borrower, grantee, to utilize the loan grant amount solely for the purpose of financing the cost of construction of a sewer lift station to intercept the sewage flow at F Street and construction of a new pressure sewer line from the lift station along F Street to pump the sewage up to Market Street, where it will then flow by gravity along an upgraded sewer line east on Market Street to B Street, and solely in the manner described in the loan grant agreement, providing for acceptance of a grant amount of $325,000 to 176, and payment of a loan amount of $36,130 solely from the rever, solely from the revenues of a third and fourth 1/16 of 1% increments, .125% total, of the borrower, grantee, municipal location option, gross receipts, tax enacted pursuant to NMSA 1978, 7-19D-11, as amended and distributed to the borrower, grantee pursuant to NMSA 1978, 7-1-6.12, and 7-1-6.15, as amended, certifying the loan grant amount together with other funds available to the borrower, grantee, as sufficient to complete the project, approving the form of and other details concerning the loan grant agreement and the intercept agreement, ratifying actions heretofore taken, repeating all action inconsistent with this resolution, and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of a loan grant agreement and the intercept agreement.
A second motion, as, a second motion as stated.
We have a motion in a second for approval of Resolution Number 2014-15, as read into the record. Um, is there any further discussion or questions? We have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014-15, as read into the record. Uh, roll call.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is fiscal year 2014 dash, uh, through 2015 budget presentations by Judge Sonia Reese and Alex Lee Brown, Town Manager, Finance Director, and request for council's direction. Judge Reese?
Good evening. Overtime. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a new experience for me, um, coming to present my budget to, uh, the council. I, as, as most of you know, I took office, um, in 2010. And, uh, prior to that, I worked for the courts for many years. The court's previous and previous judges had, um, chosen to extend the ability, uh, to submit a budget to the council, to the city manager. And, um, and that was done that way for many years. Um, it was done that way because each judge chose to do it that way. And, and I did that for my first four years in office. I did so with relatively, uh, little problems. We were able to, to visit, um, I was able to visit several times with Alex and, and approve or, or talk about, um, things that we needed to change in our budget. But as with everything else, um, sometimes things need to be tweaked just a little bit. And so according to our City Ordinance 2830, uh, the duties of municipal judge, under Section 4, uh, the duties of a municipal judge shall be as follows. And it reads, "To prepare a budget for submission to the town council." And that's a, a duty that I took on when I chose to, uh, to take office. So it's important, um, for me to come before the council and explain to you what my needs are, answer any questions that you might have. And, um, because who, who else knows the operations of the court better than, than I do? And I think I can probably answer, I know that I can answer your questions better as to how my court operates and what my needs are than, uh, what the town can do, um, because we're, we're different entities and, and we behave differently. I submitted to you the Judicial Department Budget Proposal, and I hope that you all received that. I felt really bad about providing you a copy of the, um, case law, because I thought it would be a difficult read, but after what Councilor Ray just did, I know it was a piece of cake. Okay, so, um, what I have proposed, um, are, are just a few changes. As you can see in my operations of budget, I have kept it completely in line with what Alex had, uh, submitted for our court last year. There, there is no change in the operations budget. There is a small change in the, uh, personnel budget page, and I guess that's Form 5.1. I will apologize ahead of time for my forms. I don't have the software that Alex has. I don't have, uh, the ability to use that type of software. I asked for it, but I got just a, a printed copy, so I had to have my staff create one. I will work on that in the future, so you get a, a beautiful copy, just like Alex submits to you. I've included a justification for, um, my budget. I've included, uh, some of the case law that, that drives the courts and, and is very specific as to why I should be submitting this budget instead of extending that power to, to an outside branch. And, um, I'd like to go over, um, just, just very quickly, um, why I'm asking for the, um, additional staff in my, um, personnel request. One of the, the issues that I had last fiscal year was that the position of alternate judge was, um, I'm, I'm going to say inadvertently left out of my budget last year. I had the pleasure of approving budgets, uh, for the first three years of my term, uh, but last year somehow it was, um, submitted to you without my, um, approval, and otherwise I would have addressed that issue. That is a position that is necessary, and it's a position that I use, um, to make sure that anytime I'm required by law to recuse myself, that I have somebody in office who can hear those cases. It's important for this reason. Whenever law enforcement cites in my family, my immediate friends, or people that, um, are closely close to me or that I've had some type of ex parte communication with, that I know something about a case, it's important that I recuse myself. It's required by law that I recuse myself. If I do not have that funding, then there are some, some small instances where I can address the issue by having those cases filed in magistrate court. But there are some cases that, uh, such as anything with code enforcement or, or city ordinance, um, when there is no state statute equivalent, our magistrate courts do not have jurisdiction over those. So it is a very real possibility, if we do not fund that position, that the public could perceive that if you are a friend of the judge, if you're a family of the judge, those cases will not be prosecuted. And that's not something that I want to, the public, to see. So I need a judge who can, or an alternate judge who can assist me and make sure that they, they prosecute those, or they, um, adjudicate those cases, and that position is filled. Um, we, in the past, have, um, appropriated $4,000 for that position. My last, um, alternate judge, and he's, can still serve in the capacity of alternate judge for me, does so as a contract employee, because he's a retired, um, individual. So there's also a savings to the municipality in that we don't pay the, the para and all the extra things that come along with, with, um, hiring someone that's not a contract employee. So that is $4,000 that I requested. That was not on the budget last year, okay? And again, it would have been on there had I received that budget for approval last year. Okay? And then the very next, um, position is a part-time temporary, is what I called it on my paperwork. It's a position for, um, a bailiff position. The position has never existed. It is a new position. So I know it's difficult, and, and I know that we're all dizzy from hearing all those huge numbers that everyone was talking about. My number is quite small, but it is no less important than, than the numbers that we've been hearing tonight. I, as, I hope you had the opportunity to read over my justification for the need. I, I certainly do not want to, to lend, um, attention to, to hateful people, but there are people in our community who, um, wish ill will on, on people in the judiciary. Okay? So it has been my recent experience, um, and I attribute it to the fact that the election, my name and, and my picture were out in the election law. Um, I unfortunately received some threats that were directed, um, to me. And, um, law enforcement, they were reported, they were addressed promptly. Unfortunately, um, because of a few words in the, in the threat, the individual escaped prosecution, okay? Or even the, the threat of prosecution. What I'm here to ask for today is a bailiff to give me, not only me, but the public, another set of eyes and ears in the courtroom, okay? I currently run an office with four clerks, I'm sorry, three clerks and one court administrator, and yours truly, okay? It is a court that deals with a vast number of violations. You, you saw the chief's, uh, presentation as to how many violations come in, they're citing and how busy they are. So I ask you to just take a minute to think how busy the court must be and how many people come into the court on a, on a daily basis. I, I did a real quick analysis of how many traffic violations alone, um, the court has received. And I apologize, but I only went back to September of 2011 because we changed our computer software then. And so I, we were able to, to pull that number up relatively quick. 61,240 traffic violations alone. Every individual has the constitutional right to come in and tell me about how their violation happened, to talk to the judge, to enter their plea and come before me. Our community has changed. You heard in, in the chief's presentation, there, there's... You heard in the Chief's presentation, there's a problem with mental illness and drug abuse. And sometimes those issues come to play and they are focused in the courtroom. Now, when I took office and I put my name in that hat, and I put myself in the crosshairs, I understand that. But it is also my judicial responsibility to make sure that my staff is protected and that the public is protected. One of the unfortunate things that were included in this hideous threat was that a sniper's bullet should catch me. Okay? And I put myself in the crosshairs, and I understand the responsibility. But I'm here before you, asking for this position, because I believe it's important that the public and my staff be protected while they're in the courtroom. Now, I'm not asking for a uniformed officer. I'm not asking for a certified person that's going to tackle someone or take a weapon and take that kind of action in the courtroom. What I'm asking for is another set of eyes and ears, another individual that can be there, that can assist the public if, God forbid, the worst happens in the courtroom. Someone that can buy me a couple more seconds so that I can get out. Someone that can lead the public out of the courtroom in an orderly fashion if someone decides to have a meltdown in the courtroom. I'm also responsible for, when I talk about the public, I'm also responsible for the off-duty police officers who come into my courtroom. There are some officers that come in on duty, and they're wearing their full work attire, and they work on settling things very nicely in the courtroom. But not all of the officers that come into court have these weapons. And they're not always, people are not always happy to be in the court. So I fully respect the sacrifice that I know all departments have to take when revenues are down. I would not come to you. I have not asked for anything in this budget to increase in my use anywhere else. I'm not asking to make any major purchases. I'm asking you to assist me, to make sure that our courtroom is as safe as we can make it. Now, I just want another human being, so that we have one more line of protection. One more thing I wanted to talk about. I'd like to point out that the approved budgets, I received fiscal year budgets since 2009, and I just reviewed those rather promptly. And when I looked at those budgets, 2010 and 2012 were the only two years that the budget has increased for our court. In 2010, it increased by $1,263. And in fiscal year 2012, it increased by $42,388. And that increased because a position, I believe, opened up, and it was changed from a temporary position to a full-time position. So that's where that expense was. But fiscal year 2011, fiscal year 2013, and 2014 were all reduced funds. Okay? We've only had those two within this amount of time. I discussed during my campaign, and I know some of the councilors heard this, I've always sought alternate methods to make our courts stay afloat. The truth is, municipal court has been underfunded for many years, like I'm sure most of the departments have. So we make do with what we have. We use what we have as wisely as we possibly can. We seek alternative methods to get our equipment purchased or to pay for contractual services. And I have not stopped doing that. We talked about during the election of reimbursement to the city, in my term of office alone, to a total of $72,000. At, that was at election time. We've received more funds since then. Alex talked about the, you know, many of our departments and the recreation areas is not being self-sufficient. The court will never be that. And I'll be the, I'm sure I'm not the first to tell you, but I'll tell you that. We cannot, we will never make, we'll never be a money-making organization for the municipality. We will work to be fiscally responsible, and we will make sure that no purchases are made unnecessary. But I will tell you, since 2009 was the year that I took, the year before I took office, if we compare that to last year's revenues, the revenues that came in through court, and again, before I say this, I want to reiterate the fact that we're not a money-making organization. And that's never my goal, to make sure that, you know, the city gets dollars and cents. And I'm going to say that again. But I will tell you, if you're running an efficient, effective office, and you're utilizing your staff to their potential, you will see results from that type of office. And I will tell you that since 2009, which was the year before I took office, to last year, there was an increase of $128,000 in revenues brought in, in that year. Now, that doesn't sound like a whole lot. I know you've been hearing today about $1.5 million and $2 million budgets, but that's a lot of money when you look at a court that has been asked for minimal amount and has been kept and maintained at a low operation budget. So again, I'm open to answer any of your questions. I know that Alex has quite a presentation to give, and he has, I'm sure, many more numbers to talk to you about. But this is the judicial budget, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for the judge?
I do.
Counselor Emesfet?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge. I just have one small question, and that is, you explained that you would need to recuse yourself, and you've asked for some funding for an alternate judge. And I'm just curious how you estimated that cost, in terms of probability of recusal and how much, and how you estimated that cost?
I would love to say it's a formula that I came up with, but it was the numbers that Alex had chosen to use, and it was, and I don't know, maybe even Alex didn't choose to use them. It could have been the alternate judge amount that has been always on the books. So I have no formula. I would only utilize it if I needed it. And there could be a real possibility that it would go over that, and I would do my very best to assure that it didn't.
So it's a historical number?
I don't even think it's a historical number. You know, I just really think it was plugged in by a judge somewhere down the line, before me anyway. So that could be called an artifact. Thank you.
Any other?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bettsen?
Thank you, Judge, for your presentation. I have a couple of questions, and one is the 3% increase requesting for staff. And I know that our town staff are only receiving between 1% and 1.5% increase in their salaries, I believe. So I'm not clear where the 3% came from?
Okay. That 3% is included in the paperwork that Alex sent me. Alex sent me a blank document with the Personnel section already filled in. So all I did was include the $4,000 for the alternate judge. And the estimate, to the very best of my ability, because again, I don't have access to the lovely formulas that he has, I used the simple calculation as to what a part-time temp employee would cost. So there could be a little bit of fluctuation in that. It would be just dollars and cents, I believe, change. But the 3%, if it was on there, the 3% is in line with whatever is negotiated through the union contracts for staff. That's what was submitted to me by Alex. Now, if it's 1.5% in the next fiscal year, that's the only increase that my staff would receive.
Excuse me, I want to address my question now to Mr. Brown, so that he can respond.
Yes, the union contracts state that the police receive, police union receives a 1% cost of living increase. Fire receives a 1.5% cost of living increase, and the ASME, which the court employees have been following their contract, receive a 1.5% increase.
On the form that I gave her, that was already calculated.
And that was what was calculated when we sent over the forms.
So are these numbers different, then, 3%?
Yes.
And then my, on that question is the question regarding the actual salary increase for an elected official.
The salary increase for me, $36,000 is the amount.
The budget request is for 40?
The, that's, okay.
$4,000 for the elected official.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I answered that.
Now, I don't know what you have before you, if it is the budget that I prepared with my signature at the bottom, that that's the elected officials, yes?
So, but the calculation of 3% is based on the total 40,000? Because an alternate wouldn't get a $1,200 raise if they're being paid $4,000.
And they're paid on an hourly basis, or not paid, the $4,000, they wouldn't automatically receive it? So if that number is on there as a 3%, that is incorrect?
Yeah, it's actually calculated as, as I can see, from the total of 40,000, and not just 4,000, which I'm not sure, do we, so we do, normal policy is to also give increases to all the temps? And hourly employees?
No, actually, the exempt employees, the temporary employees, are not receiving any increase this year in the budget.
So, okay, so temporary employees are not receiving anything, and exempt employees are not. So out of the group, the only exempt employee is that, is that yourself, Judge, or do you have others?
My court administrator is also an exempt employee.
Okay.
She does not receive it, unless the other department heads receive that. I'm made aware of that by the town, when they do that, when they implement the ASME contract, I receive notice of that. And then I give an increase by court order to my staff, in line with what the union contract is. But I do not vary from that. I stay in line with that, so it's better, easier to budget.
So the current budget numbers are not quite correct, because they're not even calculated? If I'm correct?
I'm just using the form that I'm asking, so I got 3%.
And if I'm looking at the 3%, and correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like you're using a 3% number to forecast a 2016 budget. Is that correct? Or are you looking at the current budget proposal? Is 3% greater than the prior years? I do see a 3%, but I see a 3% forecasting 2016.
Right, so 2016, no, that's correct. So there isn't any increase for the upcoming FY 2015 fiscal year? Okay.
The way that the form I read now, there's a 3% for the 2015 and the 2016.
Oh, okay. So, yes, that is correct, because the 2015 budget forecast is 41,200. So, yes, it is a 3% increase.
Other than that, I did not receive any wage increase, nor would the alternate judge receive any wage increase. Again, it's not the form.
Okay, and I think you have another, okay, such as temporary now. Then I guess the next question, hopefully one of the two of you can answer it, is the 55% increase in, for 2015, which would be a 55% increase for health insurance?
That, that is because of the employee, there's employees that have gone from single plans to family plans, and once you go from single or employee plus one plans, they increase a huge amount, especially in a smaller budget like this. That's why you see a huge percentage increase. And it's a pretty good dollar increase, but it's, that numbers actually probably came directly from our sheets, because those are set amounts.
There's something that you accounted for and are ready for?
Yes.
Any other questions, Counselor?
No, not at the moment. Mayor, thank you.
Just out of personal curiosity, is, are bailiffs common in municipal courts? I luckily haven't experienced a whole lot.
They are. They are, they are common in municipal courts, in municipalities that are not housed in the same building as their departments, as their police departments. Because being a municipal court, many of the courts are actually in the same building as their police department, so they would just have to holler down the hallway for an officer. Those ones do not have bailiffs. But many of the equal-sized courts do have bailiffs, or they have additional court staff in the courtroom with the judge at all times. And I don't have that, the only time I have another person in the courtroom with me is during a scheduled trial, and only when I'm not short-staffed in the office. So I intend to use this position. I forecasted for a 20-hour work week. That would be from the 8:30 a.m. in the morning, when I start my scheduled trials, through 11:30, and then again from 1:30 to 3:30, to have the maximum impact of when the majority of the people are coming in. And that would be Monday through Thursday. Friday, I do not just schedule trials, and so I would, that person would not be necessary on that day. So I'm not looking to fill a gap in not having enough staff. I really want to utilize this person just as a link for security. And that's how I, why I'm asking for this position.
Mr. Brown, what, a position, a regular employee position, would that have any other ramifications on other benefits and costs associated with benefits? If this was to move forward in this direction?
Well, if it moved forward in this direction, you know, there have been, you know, we talked earlier about, you know, the entire budget as a whole. We talked about last year, there were multiple positions that were put on freeze. What I'm going to propose to you is, this year is, decrease that number from eight, there have been frozen, to eliminate three of them. Put five of them on freeze until January 1st, so we could see where the revenues are. Basically, any increases here, additions here would mean a decrease somewhere else. Because we have to meet our 1/12 reserve in the general fund. And unless I increase my revenue projections, which I will, is not safe. We need to cut in different areas. So anything that's added here has to come from somewhere else. And actually, to meet the 1/12, I actually do have to, without even considering this, we do have to still cut a little bit from the general fund anyway. Because it just means a little bit more that we have to cut.
But this position not being a full-time, it wouldn't, would this, is this, this is a projected position, regular employee position, but part-time position, is that correct?
Part-time temporary is what I budgeted, just so that the municipality had nine months before they could even have to consider, I understand that after nine months, they have to become para-paid employees.
Even the current employee, you have to receive, get on the para plan. And then once you get on the para plan, that adds almost 20% to the cost of the employee.
If you don't mind, I have one more thing I'd like to add that I forgot to tell you about in the presentation, was that this issue that came forth, this unfortunate issue that came forth, happened almost two months ago, or at least two months ago. When the issue... When the issue happened, I contacted law enforcement immediately, talked to the chief of police, met in an emergency meeting with Alex, and, and shared my concerns. At that time, the first thing I asked for was a bailiff, can I have a bailiff, can I have a uniformed officer, because this is what's going on, I was scared, I was scared for my staff, and I was scared for the public, okay? The response from the city, and I say the city, Alex Brown, was, I'm gonna meet with the, with the chief, and the chief was tremendous, I'm gonna meet with the chief and see what can be done. His first response was, it takes, it's gonna take a while to hire a bailiff, so, you know, that's gonna be an issue, so let me talk to the chief and see what can happen, he said, I'll get back to you. Well, it's two months later, and I still haven't received that phone call on what our security plan is gonna be, what are we gonna implement? So then came budget time, and I thought, when better than to come before the council and explain and justify my need for that position than now? Let's get the position funded, so we don't have to, to cut into it when, God forbid, something happens, I want to take a proactive approach, and, and not be one of those municipalities or courts caught with, surprised and just crossing our fingers and saying, we hope it doesn't happen here, that's not good enough, and, and I wouldn't come to you with it unless I thought it was very important, and that's why I'm here, that's why I shared, this was a private experience for me, a scary one, but one that opened my eyes, and I'm thankful that it happened, because now I'm thinking not only of myself, but of the public and of my staff, and it's my responsibility to come here and do my duty to make sure that I make it as safe as possible, because if this position is not funded, and, and even if it is funded, something could happen, but we've addressed it, and we've done what we can do to try to, we saw there was a problem, we received training within the municipality, we're supposed to alert the powers that be when there is an issue, there's an issue, and it's a real issue, and it's facing all of our courts, and to just say, these types of things don't happen in little courts, these things happen in big courts. Well, I'd like to share something very quickly, district court, all those capital cases they have, those people were clients of mine before they went into district court, I had active case files on all of those capital cases over there, so to say that those violent, terrible things cannot happen in a small court would be just, just not truthful.
Counselor Beckson?
Thank you, Mayor. So in your justification for the bailiff, you do state that you propose to have a police radio available to the individual to basically act as a direct liner, panic line to assist not only the judge, but to help the public if an issue arises in the courtroom, so at the current time, just, just for reference, I work in University Museum, we do have a panic button, and, and so, I mean, the question I would have is whether or not that could be developed, because we have issues with the same sorts of people that you interact with, and generally in, let's say, generally not so friendly way when they want to potentially, you know, smash and grab or something like that, so I was just wondering if, since this individual would hopefully have a police radio, the question would be, what would be more effective, the sort of panic button that we have that I'm not gonna talk too much about, that brings everybody in their brother to the University Museum, I might have to say how it works, but if that sort of implementation, if something like that was done for the court, if that would alleviate some of your concern?
Now, I'd like to, in answering that for you, our police department is excellent, I'll commend, I'll commend the chief for their rapid response when something happens, okay? But I'm still lacking the extra eyes and ears and the help that I will need in the courtroom to either move the public around the issue, or to, to allow me the time to get away, okay? That's, that's an issue. Now, a panic button would be wonderful, we've asked for that, we don't have that yet, okay? The issue with the radio is something I just learned a couple of weeks ago in training, one of the other courts said, hey, it works like a charm, it also creates a record, so if something's happening, you push that button, central dispatch is hearing it, and everyone's gonna come quickly, that was just an idea, and that's something that I thought, hey, that's wonderful, I'm sure the chief has extra radios lying around, or he can tell me where we can order one inexpensively, just so we can get that, that done, but when we talk about, we're not going to prevent everything that can happen in the court, and I, I understand that, and I don't pretend that we're gonna cover everything here, but if we can, we can address this issue, even just making one more body, make it a deterrent, we're watching, the issue is, it's not as easily, you're not gonna get away with it as easily as, as what it looks like right now in the courtroom, then I think we've done, we've done our job, and if we can do that at a minimal cost, which I think this is minimal compared to some of the other requests that you're gonna hear tonight, I think we can have a big impact for a little bit of money.
Well, I mean, we've put other requests that are, are already funded by different measures, this is, this is through the municipal budget, so it's one of those things that I'm not sure we're gonna get any increases anywhere else, and we have positions that are still on hold, so I think that, I mean, I'm just wondering, the bailiff is not gonna be armed correctly, is that correct on us? The bailiff is not gonna, there you go.
No, I'm not requesting a certified person, because I believe that would increase the, the amount of cost to the municipality, and so I, I'm taking this baby steps, I will take what the council can do for me to make my, my office more secure, but I believe that would be a lot more expensive for the municipality.
And you know, I noticed that you state that you have made substantial changes like video arraignments, so is the video running the entire time that you're doing trials and other things, I mean, do you have that as a record as well?
No, that is only a link with the jail when I am arraigning prisoners.
So that there's no video in the courtroom either?
No, we're not a court of record, so we don't have video recording at all in the courtroom.
I'm just trying to think of various measures that might be cost-effective and work at the same time, as you said, you can't, you can't necessarily prepare for everything, and you can't always mitigate everything, I mean, we sit up here, you know, twice a month, and not as often as you, but, I mean, there's been a lot of violence to town councils, that it certainly caused some concern amongst my family members, that it just is, you know, I mean, you never know what's gonna happen in any situation, and that includes also the university, where, you know, there's always information about active shooter, or what we're supposed to do in that instance, because we have all those faculty and staff, so, I just, just was wondering what alternatives we could, we could do, with the fact that the budget is pretty tight this year.
I would very much also like to find the funding through, one of our funding sources is the court automation project, and they do pay for some security, so my next step is, if this is a, if it is budgeted, then I would like to seek funding for at least a hand-wound metal detector, and that would be utilized by that bailiff to just kind of go up and down every person who walks into the courtroom, if nothing more than to serve as a deterrent, make it just a little bit harder to, to come in and plan things of that nature.
Well, ultimately, we want our, we want everybody in the town, every, every employee of the town, of the court to, to feel safe, and that's extremely important, just as important as making our citizens feel safe, so, so I definitely empathize with you. A question for Mr. Brown, we're, we're budgeting some items that we know we can't fill, and we're not gonna fill them, is, how, how does that work, and is there, is there the possibility of setting something in place, even though we don't have the money and can't pay for it, but if the monies, if the revenues come up, is there, is there a vehicle or a method of utilizing this budget process to, to maybe set that position in place, and once monies are available, we can, we can execute?
You can do sort of like what we did with those safety positions, is, is budget them for part of the year, come back, reevaluate the revenues and what's, what's coming in at different times of the year, and if the funds are coming in, then you can go ahead and, and hire the positions, you know, I'm monitoring everything all the time, and, you know, like those positions that were frozen, I froze them without coming to you, because the revenues change every month all the time, we don't wanna have to come take council action, do a budget adjustment, every time that, you know, the revenues, this month goes, go sky high, next month go through the floor, those, those different types of things, because our revenues, you know, they sort of average out, because, you know, we've got taxpayers, especially because we're based, our primary source of revenue is gross seats taxes, they don't all pay on time, and they will report, but they don't pay on time, so we'll have one month where we actually are receiving more money than was reported, because we're getting back taxes from previous months, and so it's, it's more become, it's more a situation where I have to look at a, at a, at a short-term average. For instance, I think I've talked to most of you about the, what I've started to see during the, right before the Christmas season, and right before the tourist season, is we have a lot of revenue reported that, and the taxes aren't paid, but as the, the holiday season comes in, and they're, they're using it to build, build up inventories and types like, things like that, but I don't actually know how much is gonna end up coming in in the end, and, and.
Very quickly, yeah, you know, I don't wanna give specific guidance right now without getting your presentation, I wouldn't mind hearing your presentation and us giving guidance on, on both budget proposals, to see if there's something that, that the council might wanna motivate you on, on where we'd need to cut, because if, if we do, if we do give you direction to, to go with this proposed budget, then we clearly need to cut somewhere else, and I wouldn't mind hearing your, your proposal, so if we do choose to, to move in that direction, we have an idea of what would be cut if, if that is the case. Counselor Beckson?
I would just like to, Mayor, add a caveat that the increase in salaries be adjusted to be commensurate with what we've already talked about, so that it's not a straight across 3%, but that it meets the, you know, the way everything is working, so that there really wouldn't be anything but for, I mean, there wouldn't be a 3%, and then the elected officials, it would just be the 40 as requested, because you've requested 4,000 for, that actually looks like it was there in 2012, but subsequent years was removed, so, I just wanted to.
That was the problem last year.
Just wanted to, to make that statement, and.
I'm a little bit hesitant to clarify and get, get the two, the two schedules on par, but as far as any additional positions or how we would handle those positions, I wanna give that guidance after we, we go through the general, the general fund and make sure that if, if the council chooses to, to cut somewhere, we, we have an idea where that would be, as opposed to just saying, no, we're cutting 20,000, and then later on find out, boy, we don't wanna cut anything, so, so I wanna give this very specific guidance after your presentation. Counselor Beckson?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I hate to do this in a little something, but I have to move for a short break, and before, I mean, once we're concluded with the judge, and before we go to Mr. Brown, that's what I would like to, sorry, just.
Well, we do have a motion in the second for a short recess, privileged motion that we have to handle, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, we are in recess. Call this meeting back to order, we're still with Judge Reese, a couple, a couple other questions, a follow-up question, I was asking about like if, if bailiffs are common in the municipal courts, are they common in, luckily, I haven't even been with Judge Laney either, is, do they have a bailiff?
No, I don't know that she does. I don't know if she has someone in the courtroom with her or not either, I couldn't answer that.
And we're just, I'm just trying to get like an idea, is there any other methodologies that you've looked, looked at to, to help you in this regard, as far as who's allowed in, who, who goes to the, to the backcourt, do you have any structure of identifying potentially bad people and, and contact the, the police to, to come in and sit in on any cases?
So, clarifying a question, there have been some changes made to the building since I came in, nothing has been done recently, and not during my term, we do have a buzzer door where the clerk buzzes the individual to come into the court, and, and then, you know, they come into the courtroom, we have a wrought iron type grill design where our receptionist sits, that used to be just a glass door, it was open at one time, and then there was a problem with spitting and things like that, so then they put a glass door, and then the people would punch the glass, so then they put a wrought iron station there, that's what's there currently, we have an intercom system that we use, it's just real basic for our back door where law enforcement comes in, we verify who's coming in that way, but no, we, we haven't had any, anything else done, like I said, court automation will cover some of those programs, but we are utilizing court automation monies to help us with, with making it through our fiscal year, they're paying for all the automation of the court, all the software that the court uses, all of that, we're using that money there, now, when I talked about the, just the, what is it called, the handheld wand, that is an expense, that's not a large expense, that I could probably get authorized through the program, that I would like to utilize in the future. Now, in, in reference to Judge Laney's court, and magistrate courts, and courts of higher jurisdiction, they get their security monies, and they get their operation budget through the state, and they get it through the legislature, so anytime district courts get money for their funding, magistrates get theirs, the, the difference and the uniqueness to municipal court is that we have to come to our governing body for that, and so often, we get left behind, we surely could use the same types of security processes that they have, but we just cannot afford them because of, of the price to the municipality, so we've done the, what we could with what we had, and a lot of that was done during a capital improvement project, when I believe Judge Hockis was leaving office, or Edith was just coming in, Judge Gutierrez was just coming in, but no, no funding has gone to, to that, with the exception of my bench that was altered, and I believe it's when Judge Gutierrez was in office, because of another security issue, so I was given basically an exit behind my bench that I didn't have in the past, and that was because an issue came up.
Is there any capital improvement type granting or monies available for infrastructure improvement to advance, like even, maybe even beyond the wands and, and metal detectors and such?
That would have to come through to our operating budget, that would have to be suicide.
And this is a question for, for the chief, well, maybe for both of you, just, just to clarify, did you say that when some of the officers are off-duty going in there, that they are not armed?
Um, maybe they are armed, and I'll let the chief talk to this, but one other question you asked me is if I could kind of screen the people that came back?
Yes.
One of the lovely things about our judicial system is that we have the right to have this open court, so the court is open, so we have to allow these people in and out. So we have to allow these people in and out. We can enact court rules that can, and I have those in place where you're not supposed to take a weapon into the courtroom. Yet you and I all know how easily people can hide things and take them into the courtroom. So there have been instances where people misbehave, or we are alerted to a possible issue, and the chief is able to send us an extra officer maybe for a problem trial, something we might perceive as a problem. But the issues that come up, and the issue with this individual, this was not a problem individual. And I still deal with this person on a daily basis.
Thank you, Mayor of City Council. A couple of different things to answer that one question. By policy, they're supposed to be carrying a weapon with them when they're operating on motor vehicles. They use their take-home vehicles to travel to and from the court. I'll address that tomorrow, make sure they're all armed when they go to court. With the caveat that they cannot carry a weapon into district court. Number two, magistrate, magistrate court does not have a bailiff. At times when they perceive an issue with specific trials, they will ask for additional security, which we will provide, or we and the county will provide. We've done that for municipal court as well. We'll take steps to ensure that these issues are taken care of.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Beerson?
Just a quick one. You, the court doesn't have any type of bulletproof glass.
How was that a particular?
The court, the municipal court doesn't have bulletproof glass?
I don't know.
No. I've never been in, so, I mean, I don't know. Honestly, that, I can't say never. I was there 24 years ago when I first came here.
I don't believe the plexiglass is drunk and bulletproof. They do have a screen. I can test it for you if you want.
Yeah, that should be nice.
And again, that might be something that municipal court can venture into their security fund to various other criminal city on any of those type of items. We can eventually provide a loan if we need to. The county does loan those out. We can borrow for specific cases that come up. I'll take care of all of it.
And for Judge Reese, so I know that it's not in court, then anyone is entered in, but you do that, I just understood from a clerk that buzzes them in? So you, if there is anything that may seem to be a bit awry, you could still, you can contact the police department. Like you said, you do on occasion when you already know that there might be an issue with a particular trial, or perceive that there might be an issue, correct?
Certainly, yes. We can, we can call for law enforcement like that. But it's often, it's often difficult, and especially, and the chief is here, so you can talk to him about it. But if there are limited officers on duty, that could be an issue. Now, they have been very gracious, and they have had to call on occasion and say, well, you know, what's going on, to kind of measure the issue that might be happening. And they are gracious, and they've sent, I believe even detectives at times when they couldn't get us a law enforcement officer. But that takes a lot of planning, and we need to give him plenty of notification because they are busy and they're out there on the street. So when it just pops up in a moment's notice, that person or the officer would not be there.
Well, I just, I just want to reiterate, like the mayor had said earlier, that of course, the safety of our courts and of the citizens that are in our courts, and of course, the court folks, you know, the people that work over in the municipal court is really paramount. And I know that, yes, questions are asked, but I think that's sort of like you do in triage to try to figure out the rapid response nature, unless it's really truly, you know, a panic call. But I would say that I think that our officers are fantastic, our police department, they're extremely responsive, like you stated before, and I think that they would definitely respond if there was any issue like that, since they have in the past. So it is critical, and I'm just asking these questions for clarification so that we can see what we can do. And so the next and last question I have, at least at this point, is to you, Mr. Brown, can we seek legislative funding in the future to address some of the concerns of security that, at the municipal court?
Yes, in fact, the, probably, Jamie, the ICIPs, when we bring them, when we bring the ICIPs on June 10th, then we can put that court security on the IC, infrastructure capital improvement plan, so that way we can go for state funding for it.
For the both, whatever, after a security assessment's done, that needs to be upgraded?
Yes.
Okay, that, that would be good. I think, given the conversation and what we're doing, I think that if we can seek capital improvement monies...
Jamie, the ICIPs, she will be adding up to the, to the court.
I know that's a bit away, but at the same time, it puts it into the system and so that, you know, we can, it's, you know, depending on what happens after your presentation and what we decide, it's just something that should be kept there to move forward. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Will your name make a statement?
Counselor Emma Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you coming and speaking with us tonight with such concern and passion. You know, when a problem arises, one of the best things to do is to talk about it and then define it, what really is the problem? Then identify a variety of potential solutions, and then execute a plan. So we've had a number of potential solutions come up, videos, warnings, different kinds of safety barriers, people on call panic buttons. And so I just want to say that it sounds like we're throwing things at you, it's because often a solution is often not the first thought of solution. But I think it is, we are all agreed that the public safety, staff safety, and your safety is very, very important to us. Thank you.
I'm glad for you.
Any other questions or comments? Completely agree with the, what the two counselors mentioned, and I said it before, we definitely want to make you feel safe, and not, and beyond just feeling safe, we want you safe. So as we go through the rest of the budget proposals, we'll try to give some direction that hopefully increases your safety, both in reality and perception. Thank you, Judge.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
What I wanted to do was first start, as we develop the general fund budget, I wanted to start with some of the things that affect our general fund, well, all of our operations, that sometimes we don't have, we don't have control of at this, at this level. First and foremost is the hold harmless issue, the tax that we may start seeing in fiscal, the loss of in fiscal year 2013. It amounts to about 1.7 million in grocery receipts taxes that we would be losing from a, for instance, $9.2 million budget, that, grocery receipts budget that I'm proposing this year. Other issues that affect us is the state changes in the benefit programs. For instance, we are part of the state pool for our benefit package, health insurance and such, that went up 10%, and we had no control over that. A few years ago, the state also decided to try to figure out some way of showing up the public employee retirement program. Last year, the employees side cut to their pay. This year, the municipalities, local entities are having to cut, I mean, pay an additional four tenths of a percent when, to, for the employees' benefits. So as I go to, you see any major changes in any of the departments, those major changes are in the benefit program, portion of their budget. The, we also, part of it is inflation, the cost of doing business all the time, you know, it's going up all the time, yet our revenues have actually gone down this year from last year. So you're trying to pay for something that's more expensive. You did the same thing last year. It cost $100 this year. It costs $102, yet you're only bringing in $99. So now you're $3 short. So those are things that are, we're continually dealing with. We've also got, the town has had a history of being able to work and get a lot of grants. We've, the problem is, is to supplement our operations, especially when it comes to infrastructure. But as we see, have seen lately, that these opportunities are fewer and far, farther, further between, a little bit tired, but they're further between. And like you just saw with Colonia's initiative program, the obstacles that we face now just to get those funding sources, you know, we're waiting a year, year and a half, from the time of award to the time of construction. Inflation, having to borrow $36,000 to do a project, it's crazy. So there's a lot of obstacles that are frustrating, that are out of the local government's control that we have to deal with, and they change every year. Hold harmless, I want to go into this fairly deeply because this hurts us immensely, especially in Silver City. Basically, hold harmless is the, what happened was in back in 2005, I believe, or 2004, 2004, the state in New Mexico decided to remove the grocery receipts taxes on food and some medical services. But at that time, the municipal league and association of counties lobbied very heavily and let the legislature know that you're going to impact our local governments by very large percentages of their budget. And so at the time, the state was flush with money, and they decided, well, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and we're going to do what's called hold you harmless. And so those medical entities and the retailers that sell food still have to report how much sales they have. Then the state turns around and reimburses the cities and the counties for the tax that we would have received had the tax on food and medical services were in place. That was great until, you know, 2008, 2009, 2010, when we started seeing that recession. And the state started needing more money. They started losing revenue. So who are they going to, they're not going to hold us harmless anymore. They're going to take care of themselves and say, you know what, you're on your own, pretty much. Or they're going to push down the responsibility for making yourself hold down to the local level, yet we made the decision to cut your tax. In 2013, the tax was, that we received was $1.7 million. What's hard about this is that New Mexico is such a diverse state that the different communities in the state of New Mexico are impacted differently. You've got some municipalities, larger municipalities, that have imposed all of their taxes. So they've got that hold harmless money on larger percentages of the sales. We've kept our sales, our percentage of grocery receipts taxes fairly low, yet because we're a shopping hub of a large region, we've got many people that come into Silver City to purchase their goods and medical services. And so we're a community of 10,325, I believe. But yet, we have to provide a budget and operations for a community the size of a population of about 18,000 people. You know, our damming's population is 15,000. We actually have to provide larger, more services than damming. Because, and we receive more money in grocery receipts taxes than damming because of being that hub. So we have to make decisions of communities a larger size than what we truly are. And so when it came down to it this last year, the two communities that were hardest by hold harmless, were the two communities, because they set a population limit of 10,000, and anybody 10,000 and under could decide whether they wanted to keep their hold harmless or they were going to take the 3/8 grocery receipts taxes that they could impose to replace it. They had the decision in their own hands. Anybody 10,000 and above, all you got was the 3/8 to impose, to help replace your tax. Well, it comes out that Silver City, we lost out on, we're going to see an 18% total decrease in our grocery receipts taxes when this is all said and done. Espanola, who is, their population is 10,200 and something, those is the second largest with, I believe it's about 14 or 15%. It's a little bit lower than us. But then you get Albuquerque's and the Las Cruces', their percentages are 5, 6% losses. And yet, the 3/8 generate, if not enough, sometimes more than enough revenue to offset the hold harmless. So it's really unfair the way that the state of New Mexico has implemented it, has put communities like us at a very unfair and disadvantageous situation. So, you know, these are something that, some things that, you know, when it was imposed, we started looking at ways of how are we going to start offsetting this in the future? And, you know, last year, we did some water rate increases, hoping so that we could start diverting some of the grocery receipts taxes in the water sewer fund that were dedicated to water sewer fund, start moving them out into the general fund so we can start offsetting some of that. Well, you'll see later on that you raise the water rate, you start seeing water conservation. We started seeing some of the real effects of the water conservation plan that was adopted last year. So as we go on, I'm going to provide some options and some other things that we've talked about. And I think that we're really brought up by some of the new counselors, and because of the election, some of the real issues that some of the constituents really want us to start looking at, you know, they wrote, street maintenance was a big one. So I've got a proposal to help alleviate a lot of those issues, well, help us in that move in the right direction there. We're going to start proposing, you'll see later in an ordinance to rededicate one of our increments of grocery receipts taxes from the water sewer fund into some, into the general fund, and into a street maintenance fund. Okay. The hold harmless, basically what it does is it phases out that 1.7 million over 15 years. It gives us 3/8 of grocery receipts taxes that you as a council can impose. They took it away, but now you get to impose new taxes on our taxpayers. So what does that create? How much does it generate? It generates, at today's values, it generates $1.2 million. So even after we impose everything that's been given to us to offset the loss, we still are in the hole by $600,000. So we've got to look at other avenues to help offset some of that. You know, we've been, we've been very conservative imposing our grocery receipts taxes. So, you know, these are some easy, some are easier case scenarios to offset it, worst-case scenarios to offset it. Easiest case, impose the 3/8 grocery receipts taxes, and then let's impose the quarter percent municipal infrastructure grocery receipts taxes, tax that we have at our disposal to impose by ordinance. But what does that do? The county also has 3/8 of the hold harmless grocery receipts taxes that they can impose. And you know what? I don't see why they wouldn't want to impose that. Because that's, they're in one of those situations where it's extra money to them. And they get to blame the state for it, but even though it ends up being extra money. So what happens to people in Silver City, what's, just to make us, bring us back in 15 years, just to bring us back to 2013 numbers, we have to increase grocery receipts taxes by at least 1% or 4% just to get back to today's dollars. Now, that doesn't take into account inflation and the other things that we've talked about earlier, such as the changes, the increases to health insurance, any future changes to the PERA, you know, the cost of living increases, those types of things. So the worst-case scenario is that, you know what, we don't raise... So the worst-case scenario is that, you know what, we don't raise taxes, we start cutting services. We start, we'll have to start cutting services by a hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year just to help offset the hold harmless loss each year. But then let's add in the two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars worth of inflation that we saw because of the medical and PRA increase this year. We're already three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in the hole after one year. So that's how dire this situation is, and how much we really need to talk to our legislators. And we've been very lucky that our representatives, Martinez and Senator Murades, have been very proactive and at the forefront of helping smaller communities like us. I keep going the wrong way, but some of the methodology is, we went, I started to develop the general fund. Based on current revenues, and current revenues, I'm projecting we'll have a total of nine point three million dollars and generate nine point three million dollars in grocery receipts taxes. Last fiscal year, we brought in four point seven million. So that's a one point, a hundred and seventy thousand dollar decrease from last year. This year is a little bit, is a little bit less than what I'm projecting, projecting a two percent increase because we will see some additional construction projects next year. I also am recommending that we go ahead and take the grocery receipts tax that, the one eight, one sixteenth that we have dedicated to the water sewer fund, and take it and put, wait, one eighth, I'm sorry, one eighth that's dedicated to the water sewer fund, and put one sixteenth into the general fund, and one sixteenth into what we're going to call the street maintenance fund. What I'm going to do, you'll see later on, is diversify a revenue stream of continuous funding for additional street maintenance for the community. All that takes is an ordinance. The tax is already in place. It's not a new tax. All it is, is taking it and rededicating it from the water sewer fund into these different Other things that the finance staff identified is that we've started seeing a lot more people using debit and credit cards. We're paying a hundred, we're paying about thirty-seven thousand dollars annually in credit card fees. You know, we're talking about some of these needs, these real shortcomings, that fee almost makes up a lot of what we were looking, talking about earlier, and we'll talk about in a little while. We also have an opportunity now, like I talked, we talked about earlier, that we're paying off a lot of our bonds debt service right now. This year is our last year of paying our GL bonds. GL bond wasn't election held in nineteen eighty-four to increase property tax by, it's varied over the years, to pay debt service for some water sewer projects. Right now, it's six tenths of a mil, six tenths of a mil that's imposed that the residents of Silver City are currently paying. What I'm proposing is to take that six tenths, and rather than let it go away, maintain the current property tax rate and dedicate that to the street maintenance fund. So now, the street maintenance fund, we have gas tax, we have some grocery receipts tax, and we have property tax, all different revenues that go up. Property taxes are usually have a positive value all the time. Gas tax has been continually going in the other direction. Grocery receipts taxes are up and down, so this will help create a more stable revenue stream so that we can do some additional street maintenance. So, continuing with the methodology, is what I looked at is to maintain the current staffing levels that we have in fiscal two thousand fourteen. Have a zero percent increase in operating costs for all the departments, which is in the proposal that I've made to, the medical benefits are increasing, that ten percent is about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The one sixteenth that we're bringing from the grocery receipts taxes is around two hundred thousand dollars. So we're almost offsetting that increase in the, maintaining the union, the cost of living increases, which is between one and one and a half percent. The, that will not apply to the exempt employees and temporary employees. Keep the positions that have been frozen, that were frozen in fiscal two thousand fourteen. Maintain that for at least until January of next year, so that we can see how the revenues, if they start coming in better, we can start hiring them earlier on and seeing, because what I've seen was, this last year was a year when we didn't have very much construction. It was a low year really for construction in Silver City. Over the next three, four years, we do, I do have identified quite a few bigger projects that are going to help, help the grocery receipts taxes. The retail, which are a biggest source of revenue, has maintained at almost a very stable, no growth, level over the last couple of years. So it's things like construction that gives us the big increases. Food and accommodations has started to go up, so when we look at tourism, that's starting to really be a bigger part and a help to our local economy. So, basically, what I've done here is I've given you a summary of what I proposed for each division. Please exclude the judicial portion. Basically, the legislative portion, there is no employment cost in there. That's mostly operational. The decrease is more because our next election, the surprise is going to cost less since it isn't a citywide election. The executive, we've got a seven percent increase, primarily the benefits. General costs, we've got an eight percent increase, primarily that cost is liability insurance, medical insurance. Then we've got the police department, that's four percent increase, and that is because of medical costs.
Museum.
Oh, the museum, I'm sorry. Yes, they've got a fifteen percent increase because, you know, like I said earlier with the municipal court, you see bigger percentage increases because when you go from a single to a family, a single person, the insurance is about seventy-seven hundred, and you get the family insurance, it's around sixteen thousand.
Sixteen to twenty.
Sixteen to twenty. So it's a huge cost. And, see, who's been doing more of the detailed work here, so I have to ask you. You know, the fire department, actually, it's a six percent increase. I actually, when I copied this over, copied over, instead of two thousand fifteen, I used the two thousand fifteen for the, there was a six percent increase there, and I think we have that somewhere else down here too. The, I think that's the only one I did it correct. Facility maintenance, what I did is I redistributed some of their operations because they do work a little bit more with the water sewer fund and sanitation fund, so I redistributed a little bit more of their personnel cost to the water sewer and sanitation fund to help the general fund out a little bit. We've got the finance, that's primarily all, we've got eleven percent, the increase was ten percent. You've got community development, it's a one percent increase, and the reason that increase is actually smaller than the ten percent with the maintaining the current staffing levels is because they're one of the departments with an open position that I'm holding for half a year. So that saved on that increase. Then we also see the library, they've got two positions that have been frozen for that period of time. We've got the parks, they've got one position that's been frozen. The swimming pool, we continue, it's, we don't, there's no benefits really in there, so it's more operational cost and temporary employment. The cemetery, that's almost all maintenance cost because all of the personnel is in the parks department. The recreation center, there was a decrease actually, and that was due to the fact that we had employee go, a replacement of employees that went from family to single. They went the opposite direction in that situation. Then we've got the streets department, we've got a frozen position there. Actually, to be honest, we've got, we've got one frozen position, and we eliminated two temporary positions from last year. So we eliminated the temporarys from that, that's why that one went down. The city shop is only five percent because we have frozen one of the mechanics. And then public works, we redistributed that because basically that's only two people, the public works director and the secretary, and we've redistributed them between the general and the sanitation fund. So basically, to meet our one-twelfth reserve with the proposal from the municipal court, rather than it be twenty, us need to find twenty-five thousand dollars, we need to look and find forty-three thousand dollars to meet our one-twelfth reserve. So with that, I want to see where you want us to look at identifying that.
Counselor Emerson.
Thank you, Eric. So, I'm just going to ask you to go back to the options, which is, I'm not sure what side number that is. We have the hold harmless options because we do have to start preparing because it starts being withdrawn in July of two thousand sixteen. I mean, it starts to go down. So, all these options that you have up here for a hold harmless and how to mitigate that, none of these have been included in the present-day budget that you've just presented.
No. What's most important about these options is to really get you thinking of, I've spoken with quite a few department heads and employees and everything, is we're facing a really situation where we're really going to struggle. You know, fourteen years ago, when I did my first budget, the town actually had a hundred and eighty-some full-time employees, and we had about forty summer youth employees. So at one point, we had two hundred and thirty employees. But at that time, the average length of service for a city employee was between three and five years. So we had a lot of turnover. So all the employees were at beginning salary, or they were younger employees with a single insurance policies, or at that time, none, because it wasn't required. Today, we have, it's about a hundred and sixty full-time equivalents, but the average length of service has gone from, because we've worked towards getting, keeping our employees having a better quality, better trained employee. And so now the average length of service is between twelve and fifteen years. So they're a lot more expensive. But you're getting more bang for your buck with those employees because you don't have to train them. The less turnover, you don't have the training cost, those types of things. But we've gotten into a situation where we're facing the hold harmless, where we've got our current tax structure in place, and the only way we can grow or keep up with inflation or those other things is to start imposing taxes. What I'm proposing to this year is to reorganize things to, you know, we want to strengthen up the water sewer fund because we want to make that self-sustaining, that self-sufficient on its own. We want to put some funds in place so that we can maintain our roads properly for the long, the long haul. And this year, I focused on keeping services from the general fund at the status quo and doing things like what Chief Reynolds has done here. Let's take what we have and reorganize and change the way we think about our operations. And that's the benefit of having the better-trained, longer-lasting employees is, is you know what, they're trained, and we can change and move in different directions. We've done that for years, and we need to change with your direction and where you want us to go.
So, the next slide is the methodology used to develop, and so all of these things have been considered, even though there's some things that we would have to do with legislative action to make them occur, but they've all been, they've been vetted and considered in this. But we still, with the proposal by the court, by the judicial branch, rather than the twenty-five thousand that you had initially projected would be what we have to make up, we have now forty-three thousand that we're under for the one-twelfth reserve.
Yes.
So, it's a difficult thing to make a decision about what you're going to cut to make up that forty-three thousand.
And that's why I'm giving the hard decision up to you.
Just real quickly, just because I've suffered through these many times myself, at my place of employment, what a reduction, a small reduction in supplies and expense, how much could we garner?
Nothing because, you know, as even the judge has stated, over the last three years, we've been maintaining our operations, supplies and expenses, at a very minimum level, like for instance, like the chief showed you in his budget, ten percent for a budget that size, you know, they've been using other grants and things to supplement their operation funding. So, you know, we've been running on empty when it comes to the operations for a long time.
So we see a lot of, some of the increases, but those increases are predominantly or in whole due to the benefit increases. You're not increasing the number of staff in any one of these areas?
No. Not one of those, there's some reorganization of the staff, but there is the same number of staff in every one of those departments.
And then there was about eight positions that were shy this year, and I think you mentioned earlier that three of those positions are just going away. You're just not going to have those positions.
Yes. For instance, the animal patrol officer, we're looking at not increasing the size of the police department a little bit, and it's because the police officers are expensive, you know, for starting police officer with benefits, we're looking around the base of around sixty-three thousand dollars. Start it up this way, it's up to a hundred thousand dollars.
So that's what we're looking at, is taking, just taking away the animal control, the additional animal control officer that was never filled, plus two police officers?
There was two police officers that were budgeted last year, but we never brought, we never, they were actually frozen from the very beginning of the year. So they were almost never considered as additions, but we've maintained the staffing level at what it was in fiscal two thousand thirteen.
And the current five frozen positions are still going to remain frozen?
Frozen until January.
Okay. So going in from January through June, that's in this budget?
Yes.
That's in these numbers?
Yes. And if revenues are realized at the nine point two million dollar level, then in January we will start moving forward with those positions. If not, they will remain frozen.
How important are those positions? What, can you articulate why we need to keep those in place?
Well, you know, I think each and every one of those departments can tell you that, you know, for instance, the streets department, we're giving fewer staff, but we're giving them more money for maintenance. So we're going to have to hire contractors and do things like that. We've got parks, we've decreased, the parks have been increasing, yet we're decreasing the number of parks. The planning department, when Jim Colts left, Jamie has taken on a lot of extra, a lot of extra duties. And, you know, but the same amount of work is there with fewer staff. The library has been trying to do it for, and has been doing it, but they have, we've basically come to the realization that their staff has been so overworked that we're going to start to look at cutting some hours at the library to serve the public because we just, we're not getting the service from the staff. just, we're not getting the service from the staff because they're getting overworked.
Any other questions or comments for?
I have.
Counsel Raymond Smith.
Brief comment. Mr. Brown, you're an operations guy. I was an operations woman. And so I really appreciate all of the options that you have thought about. Looking at combining operations and improving processes is really the place where you've started, and I encourage you to do that. I know that the library is going to be looking at improving their operations and looking at their services portfolio, seeing where they can combine, seeing where the demand is not there, seeing where they can move things out. So that's, I hope is an underlying, ongoing commitment that you have.
Yes, I think that's basically what we've been doing for the last four or five years because we started to get, you know, as the cost of employees has gotten so much higher, we've started to, that's where we're cutting back. We're not cutting back. That's where we're getting more efficient, more efficient and doing things. You know, when I first started in the finance department, we had 13 people. We've got seven now, and we do more. We probably do twice as much as what we did back when I was, I started in the finance department. And, you know, we've always got to continue to look at those things all the time, and no matter what revenues have coming in, you always have to do that.
I'll just briefly continue. So there are process improvements, there are technological shifts that can really add to stuff. And something you haven't talked about, but which I'm sure is happening, which is you're going to be looking at retirements. There are people in your positions of experience that are going to be retiring, so there's got to be some planning for bringing, I mean, I don't want to disappoint those in that, but that's going to be some shifts in revenue.
There will be some shifts in revenue there. The thing is, is there's not very many right now. In the next five, six, seven years, you're going to lose two thirds, we're not going to be, we'll be able to leave. Most of us here will be able to leave. Half, most of our departments will be able to leave. And a lot of their staff were hired near the same time as then. So that's the thing, we've got that big group of employees that are up at the two-thirds through their career where they can retire. I don't, we don't have to retire, and I don't want anybody to retire. You know, that's, you know, those things, yes, they will always be looked at.
Yeah, that's.
So there's not a whole lot, without just taking away service. We, at this point, we're getting to the point to either, we're going to be taking away service to move funds around. We've got to, we've got to do without a position.
Yes.
Makes it tough. And we also have to get creative in how we address the problems, as Counsel Raymond Smith was looking at. We have to go beyond our instincts on how to solve problems and we have to really look outside the box and maybe use some technology and some other funding sources to get to where we want to be.
And I think sort of to lead into that a little bit, and it's just a small example of something that we started looking at. Two years ago, we started all of our co-op grants, three councils that were here, we started applying, rather than doing small, for instance, our last one was Grant Street right there behind Penn Park, all that work that was done, rather than doing small projects like that, all of our applications, the co-op applications had been for chip seal. Because what we want to do is do a chip seal project and then with some of this money that we're allocating now, turn around and do a fog seal. Because what that does, it eliminates the need for us to have to go back and fill potholes all the time. So that's one of those efficiencies that we've been planning and working towards, but we haven't been able to get to yet. But yes, that's an example of what we're working towards.
There's a couple of issues that are developing, and as you mentioned, the election cycle kind of illustrates that with streets and such. I think the economy over the last several years, nationally and here locally, and your budget constraints, we haven't been serving the community adequately. So they want us to do more and yet we have less money. And every one of these items is extremely important. The town doesn't function, there's things that sometimes we might consider trivial, but we can't operate without libraries, museums. Our, the economy starts to take further slides and revenues actually dip even further and faster than we'd like them to. One of my biggest concerns is the fact that 15 years out, we're looking at $600,000 of today's revenues that future councils aren't going to have, that they're even, we're going to have to even get smarter. We're going to have to do more service with even less people. In 15 years, we're not going to be able to afford 160 employees is my gut feeling. And we need to really start figuring out how we're going to do the same job even remotely close to the same job with less people.
Yes. And we see all these departments, you know, communities our size don't have all of these services. But we've been able to do it because of the revenues, because of being that hub. But now are we going to continue to provide these services because we're the hub? Or are we going to contract back to a community size of 10,000 and with the services the size of a normal communities of 10,000?
We cut out the museum. Someone argues that that's just an unnecessary, a non-essential service. We cut that out and yes, we'll be serving less than 18,000 and we'll be collecting a lot less in revenues.
Well, that is back to where I think I mentioned it earlier, is one of those areas that we're starting to see bigger percentage increases is improvement accommodations. And so you start seeing that tourism, which that museum and the library and those different types of services, quality of life things that we've talked about, when people come here, they want to come back. And it's clean, it's a very clean type of economic development because they came, come, visit, use our services, spend their money, and then they go home and use their infrastructure. That to be a smart economic development.
So I do fear how we cut any of those items without cutting our nose off to spite our face. We could definitely get into that if we start trying to label anything as non-essential because it's the big picture that keeps people coming here, moving here, spending money here, and actually giving us what little revenues we do have to distribute. And I empathize with the job that everybody's undertaken to try to come up with their budgets and their solutions. What comments for direction do you, does anybody want to add to Counsel Emerson?
I think as I know, preliminary comments were to, you know, adjust the salaries appropriately in the judicial line. And I think we have to look at some alternatives to increase in security that, because I think that if other departments are, I mean, it's just really, I mean, it's a catch 22 because if we hire someone there, you know, we have a significant amount that we have to make up from somewhere. Someone's going to lose out. And most of these increases, as you've already mentioned, are either in stipulated salary increases through union negotiations or because of pattern changes in benefits. I mean, there is no way to cut those. I mean, we're not about to do anything that would hire either one of those. So I think that the first thing would be to see what we can do to place the position requested by the Court for the benefit on hold until January, see if that might, if we might get the revenues so that it would be frozen. But in the meantime, work with the police department, the chief has already mentioned, being able to get the wand on loan from the sheriff's department. Also looking at, as I had mentioned, putting that on the ICIP list, you know, to do upgrades there that I think that would benefit the Court and increase safety, you know, put that through legislative action. I mean, I think that we have to kind of, what we're doing is thinking ahead, we're trying to mitigate what we have to do here, but also trying to think ahead, trying to think of how we can ensure that the Court is secure, not only for the public, but also for the individuals that work there. So it seems that right now, we can't, I mean, if we did those things, you know, bring the salary increase in line with what's being done at the town, and we put the request for a benefit in that sort of nebulous frozen thing to January, how much more will we still have to make up?
About $23,000.
So that would go back to 25. So the question is, is how do we make up the 25? I mean, this is where it becomes a difficult discussion because we do have, our larger taxes really doing well, but at the same time, we have to use those funds not just to support certain services, I mean, we already do, and you have, you are, you know, using, what's it, $79,000?
Seventy, yeah, seventy.
Some in the seventies.
Wasn't it 72?
Seventy.
Seventy-two thousand dollars to do certain things with, you know, the museum, the other things that we're doing, because that brings people into our town and they use those services. So we don't want to have less of a distribution and larger tax.
How about I recommend this, that, you know, because the executive and finance staff work with all the different budgets, so I can, they are spread out. Part of my salary comes from general, part comes from water sewer, part comes from sanitation. And that's basically how we're all spread out. How about I redistribute enough to get us back to those, to at least the water sewer fund or to the sanitation fund so that we can get down to that 112th in financing executive staff?
And just as, you know, and just for clarity, you know, we're talking about general fund expenses, which is really our most flexible fund, and clearly, it's not that flexible anymore. The other monies, and we do have a number of other income sources, but they're, in generally speaking, dedicated in many cases by state statute. So we're not allowed to do anything other than what they're being utilized for.
Yes, and that's larger tax, for instance, the, what?
Enterprise.
The enterprise funds, they can be used a little bit, but we can spread the administrative stuff.
Okay.
Because it's going to be run like a business. And so, yes, I can split a little bit, the administrative stuff, pass a little bit more up that way.
Counsel Emerson.
Can we increase the larger tax? Is that something we are powerful?
No, we don't. We don't, I think we're maxed out at what we have available legislative.
Yeah, even though other towns in other states have 10, 12% larger tax?
Yes. I had this conversation with one of the hotel owners who was willing to charge more larger tax, but this tax system in New Mexico, quick sentences, depends on who you have as your legislator or your lobbyist. You can, Sanfe's got those big numbers, really high larger taxes that they can, but you know what? You come down in Grant County and Southern New Mexico or other, I mean, I think even Las Cruces has a higher tax than we do.
So that's something we should work?
Yes, that's something we should.
So, but just the next question, because I do see an influx of various kinds of tourists. You know, sense of place tourism really isn't important. These people come with money, so I'm just wondering if there are other potential ways to engage them, not tax them, but perhaps impose some fees, you know, if there's some ways to really, really enjoy the benefits of those wonderful people coming to visit us. So I think there might be some things we could do.
Let's have a discussion.
Let's have a discussion.
It looks like the basic guidance is, clearly, there's nothing that anybody is willing or able to cut at this point, but we definitely want you to go back and look at whatever efficiencies, whatever technological advantages that we can obtain and see what other alternatives we have to help us, especially because we clearly need to increase the safety and security at the municipal court. So in light of some dire numbers, let's try to think out of the box, create as many possibilities that we can to work together and try to make that a safer environment over there.
Okay. And I'll work with, let the chief be in the lead of that because he is more of an expert in working on that area.
And that would be really good. Counsel Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just definitely work really closely with the Court and with the judge. You know, I mean, if there's any options for any type of grants, even as we're going, moving forward with a request, you know, to the legislature for capital improvement limits. But I think that that, I know that, like I said, that's still a process, but I think that that, to me, is something that we need to look at, is definitely seeking legislative allocation to do some of the major improvements. I know that doesn't include salaries and that's, you just need to make sure that everybody understands it's really, it's really for capital improvement, not for salaried employees or anything. So, thank you.
You have your guidance?
Yes, sir. I think I understand what you're saying.
Go deal with the chief and try to work and try to see where we can go moving forward?
Certainly, that's, it's on everybody's mind. And then we've, we've at least taken the first step to discuss it. Hopefully, it does come, it does come to light, and we are able to do this in January. But I do look forward to working with the chief. Certainly, he's of assistance to me, but I would like to be made a priority in January when it, when and if it does come available, and I, to be able to jump on it then.
I want to take it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay. And also next week, we want to go to the next largest fund. You know, let me backtrack a little bit. We have multiple different types of funds. We have the general fund, which provides all the services to the community, the majority of the services. Then we have the two major enterprise funds, which is the water sewer and sanitation funds. Then we have the special revenue funds, we have the capital funds, we have trust and agency, and we have debt service. We haven't brought the debt service, trust and agency funds to you because those are just pastors from debt and those types of things. Special revenue, we're bringing, we bring a couple of them to you that are important that you make the real decisions on. But most everything in the capital, for instance, the capital fund, what the capital fund is going to do is when we borrow this money, the money will be put in a capital fund and you already authorized the use of those capital purchases. So it will be in a fund by itself already. So, and then as we go through, for instance, this F Street grant, it'll be part of a capital fund. So all of these different projects that you see on a normal, regular basis, they are either going into a special revenue or a capital fund. So that's why we don't bring each of those individually to you, because you see them, you're making those decisions all the time throughout the year and you're seeing them. So unless you want me to change that process, I can, but this is... So, unless you want me to change that process, I can, but, but this is, I think, when it comes to those funds, you're kept more up to date on those than what you are on the general fund and the water sewer fund. So, I'm getting back to the water sewer fund. Currently, the town provides water to approximately eighteen, yeah, the town provides water to approximately eighteen thousand residents in Grant County. We either provide it directly, or we provide it through master meters, through, to water associations, who then distribute the water through their, their distribution systems. There are different rates for the different customers, we've got the in-town residential, commercial, basically is the same rate, then you have the out-of-town rate, which has been getting closer and closer, so it used to be a double water rate, but through the years I've been trying to give, eliminate that double water rate. And then, each one of the water associations have a negotiated rate, and their rates change in the same manner that ours do. So if our rate goes up in town by three percent, theirs goes up by three percent. If, for instance, what I, we proposed last year, we went from the base rate being three thousand down to two thousand, theirs went down to two thousand. So, they get the same changes that we do in town. The water sewer fund, the revenues are basically made up of water consumption, sewer consumption, wastewater consumption, processing fees, and other miscellaneous, and currently, one-eighth grocery receipts tax, one-eighth percent of the grocery receipts tax, that basically is subsidizing the enterprise fund. And I am going to recommend that we move that into the general fund, part of it into the general fund, and part of it into the street maintenance fund, so that we can provide those services that grocery receipts taxes are truly supposed to be provided. Right now, I am going to propose a rate change over the next year. Currently, the base rate is ten, ten dollars and twenty-five cents for the first zero to two thousand gallons, then it's three seventy-four for the next two to ten thousand, and four fifty-one to ten, for everything over ten thousand gallons. Out-of-town mix is eighteen oh-two for the first zero to two thousand, six dollars and twenty cents for the first two thousand to ten thousand, and then seven twenty-eight for everything over two thousand, I mean, ten thousand. What I propose to do, and this is based on the recommendation of the Water Conservation Plan, is that we start metering every thousand gallons of water. So, what I'm proposing to do is create what's called an access fee to actually be connected to and using our water system, and so the ten twenty-five that we're currently calling the base rate will continue to be ten twenty-five just for access, and then we will start charging three dollars and seventy-four cents for the first zero to ten thousand gallons. Two-two would be four fifty-one for everything for ten thousand dollars. That, the per thousand gallons is no different this year from last year. We're only metering the first two thousand gallons. As far as out-of-town, I'm keeping the access fee at eighteen oh-two, just like the base rate is this year, six twenty for the first ten, zero to ten thousand, seven twenty-eight for the, everything over ten thousand gallons. So basically, the main change is to start metering every thousand gallons of water going through our water system. And, you know, the effect that our rate increase had last year was minimal, because we raised it by an average of nine percent, but then we started seeing a billing amount of seven point six five percent less, so we only saw a one point, one point three two five, four three five percent increase in billing. For the first time in fourteen ever, actually, I even went back from there, we actually, in the month of, for the winter quarter average, for those three months, well, two of the ones, for December and January, we actually built more in sewer and wastewater rates than we actually did for water consumption. And so, because, and that is because the, you do the winter quarter average, it starts in March, and it's billed to the next March, and, and really, based on the water, sewer and wastewater rate, the winter quarter average has changed, the total amount billed per month changed very slightly. So, you know, it was really, it was actually pretty scary seeing that we were building more for sewer and wastewater than we were for water. I was stressing out quite a bit. So, what I'm doing here is, the water sewer fund, I'm giving you a summary, and the water sewer fund is comprised of five different divisions. It is the meters division, the utility billing division, the general cost division, well, there's six, the water division, the sewer division, and the wastewater division. The wastewater sewer rates that are charged are designed to cover the cost of operations, debt service and operations that are associated with the sewer and wastewater. The water rate is associated with debt and operation and maintenance, and future maintenance of the infrastructure, and we've got to understand that we maintain the infrastructure within town, and we also maintain a large amount of the infrastructure in extraterritorial zone, the ETZ, because we provide so much water to people outside of the community. So, based on the projections that I've, the rates that I, I've given you, we're looking at about a four percent increase in total water sewer and wastewater rates, then we've got some miscellaneous revenues with the connections, the reconnections, the charges for services, penalties, and then, the one big difference you can see there is that there's no grocery receipts taxes in there. So, we do have an NOI on the agenda later today, and if that, that passes, and if that passes subsequently, then the, that grocery seat will be moved to the general fund and to the, the street maintenance fund. When we, now, salaries, salaries are increased about by one percent, employee benefits about one percent, a lot of that is, employee benefits, instead of going up ten percent, is actually one percent, because, you know, there's a lot of different changes, ups and downs with that, big part being the insurance. And then, the only big change thereafter is for contractual services, and that is actual for traditional engineering funding, part to get some of our projects ready, for instance, S Street, we apply for a colonist and another colonist project that we hope to get, we want to start putting that money aside, and then we want to make sure that we have enough money set aside, so if there's any additional requirements for recharge credit project, that we have the money available to get, get that stuff taken care of right away. And then, the others is the operating costs, which primarily, the biggest cost for operating is electricity, is our pumping cost. Pumping for the wells, and then booster pumps throughout the system. So that, that is our, other than salaries and benefits, that is our biggest cost. So we are looking at about a three percent decrease in revenues, but a one percent increase in expenditures. So, I'll be very conservative, so we're starting with a zero beginning cash balance, bringing up five point three four nine million dollars in revenues, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in transfers out, and all of that goes to debt service. We've got four point three seven three million in expenditures, that would give us a balance of four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And in our ornaments, we try to keep a one-twelfth reserve, we're not going to do it this year because of the, the big decrease in the billing because of the conservation, but we're trying to get us back up there to the one-twelfth, and so, we want to maintain that money, that way, you know, if we, we do have access to a lot of debt service loans for just in case for, for projects that we need to do, but we want to have this reserve, especially in these operating, these enterprise funds for that infrastructure, because this is, this fund is heavily dependent on infrastructure upgrades and replacement and all those sorts of different things. So, unless you have any changes with that, actually, if you look at that, I use the one, the local reserve of one-twelfth here, we're actually fifty-three thousand above that, one-twelfth, so I actually could take that twenty-four thousand out this year. Okay? So do you have any thoughts, recommendations here?
Continue, well, consider that, taking that twenty-four to, to meet the other reserve fund.
Okay. I am at the next council meeting, when we, when we bring the preliminary budget, we're going to ask more, more refined numbers. I am going to bring the, it is required that I bring the updated water rate, water sewer and wastewater rates, and I will be bringing what I've shown you as proposed, as the rate, and I want to get it so we can get it in for the June billing, because we don't start seeing those revenues until July. Okay? Now, I think that's going to present the next one.
Okay, our other enterprise fund, which is our sanitation fund. Can you hear me? Our other enterprise fund is our sanitation fund, and what that provides funding for is our sanitation collection fees, landfill tipping fees, recycling services, and the old landfill monitoring. We operate our own system, it consists also of residential and commercial residents. Customers are charged on the number of times their trash is collected and how much is collected, so basically, we have a, you pay as you throw system put in place, which right now, Alex was, earlier Alex informed me was, we're the only, we were the first entity in New Mexico to implement that system, and Albuquerque just recently picked up that system as well. The tipping fees that we collect, we pay that to the Southwest Solid Waste Authority based on tonnage taken to the landfill. We currently pay forty-four dollars per ton. And then, our recycling services are also provided by the Southwest Solid Waste Authority. We do not charge our customers for recycling, it just provides a different way of customers to pay less for their collection fees. We do have a contract with the Solid Waste Authority, we do pay them about, our contract is for about ten to fourteen thousand dollars a year for recycling. The rates for sanitation come from collection, which of course is based on the size of container they have and how many times the trash is picked up. The landfills are based on the estimated tonnage collected by the town from the container, and currently, we have a three percent increase, a built-in three percent increase, which expires after this year. Next year, we would probably go to evaluating it year by year based on the town's needs, and maybe set up a different structure depending, maybe something more similar to the waste, So right now, we're projecting a two percent increase in revenues. Our transfers out are decreasing significantly, and that is due to paying off some of our debt services. And then, the increases that you see are significantly in the employee wages, which is due to the benefits. We are also, contractual services increased due to, we're going to have an increase in tipping fees, and then also, there's an increase in capital purchases due to replacing one of the smaller brown garbage trucks, they're called the burrows?
It's called the burrow.
That's what the desk is.
It's the one we used to do the hand pickups downtown, that, that one, so that's budgeted in there.
So, and again, we're being conservative, and we're estimating a zero beginning balance, but with the increase, the three percent increase, and then also the reduction in debt service, we're looking at having an ending cash balance of approximately forty-eight
So, are you okay with us proceeding in that, in that manner? The contractual services, the big, the big, there's two, actually, two costs that are associated with that. One is, was the increase in tipping fees from forty-two dollars to fifty, to forty-four dollars, and then we are going to have to probably pay a little bit more for the recycling services next year, and those are the main things in that fund.
Do we need a reserve in that?
No, that, actually, the enterprise funds don't require a reserve at all, so the only reason that we try and keep the reserve in the water sewer fund is because it was built into the ornaments when we, when we did, when we looked at it for evaluating the rates annually, we wanted to make sure we tried to build that one-twelfth reserve, and maybe that's about something that we wanted to look at, the sanitation fund as well, when we, when we do the new rate structure.
Any other questions on sanitation?
Okay, next is the street maintenance fund. Under, under our current structure, the town's primary source of revenue that we use for street maintenance, the salaries come from the general fund, and basically, the only other sources of income that we have for street maintenance is, is gas tax. We do use some water sewer fund, because they do a lot of street breaking with, they definitely do a lot of street patching, so they are charged for street patching, but it's all gas tax. And so, basically, this last year, we only budgeted a hundred and twelve thousand dollars from gas tax for maintenance on our streets, and that's, we've got seventy-six miles of streets in Silver City. So, you know, that's why we started moving to the co-op, the street, and that type of thing. So we started, you know, we started getting a lot, a lot of input when it occurs, so we started to look at the diversifying our revenue stream for the street maintenance, and it's, this fund was, is currently called the gas tax fund. We're going to change it, the name, from the gas tax to the street maintenance fund, because we're doing, we want it diversified and make sure that people know that we're not only using gas tax for the, the maintenance. So what we are proposing to do is, is continue to use the gas tax, what we want to do is rededicate that, that six tenths of a mil that we're using, currently using to pay the GEO bonds, taking that and imposing it under our operational mills of property tax and dedicating it into this fund. And we do that through resolution like we did last year, and then, rededicating one-sixteenth of the one-eighth from the water sewer fund. So, what we end up with is, last year, usually, the street maintenance, the gas tax fund has usually operated in the negative, because it's a really big estimate, and sometimes we mean a lot more than what we, we actually end up generating, and so, for instance, the revenues this last fiscal year, we budgeted a hundred and eighty-three thousand, but we only budgeted a hundred and seventeen to use, because we were in the negative. By diversifying this next year, we're projected to bring in five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and being able to use four hundred thousand dollars for street maintenance, going from a hundred and seventeen to four hundred thousand dollars in one year, and making that, that fund and the availability of those funds reoccurring annually, so that we can actually start doing some real work on our streets for the town of Silver City. So, you know, that's where we're at with that, and do you have any comments?
We did our chip sealing projects.
It's probably about seven years ago.
You say it hasn't happened in my time.
I think you were still in college.
I know, everyone in the world, not that I'm a bad one, well, thank you.
Yeah, and people, um, you thought to them about this, that's it.
On, uh, street maintenance, extremely vital.
Really, very.
And I'm glad you've been thinking ahead and trying to solve that little riddle that we've had for the last half dozen years. Thank you.
Last but not least, we have one of our special revenue funds, which is our lager tax. Uh, we are projecting a two percent increase this year in revenue. Um, we are going to budget two hundred thousand dollars for community promotions. Um, the RFP is currently open, and the recommendations will be coming to you by the end of June, beginning of July. Um, we also have seventy two thousand, almost seventy three thousand budgeted for the paper partial of the museum services. That will also cover, um, police and fire overtime for tourist events such as the Blues Festival, Torre de Hila, things like that. And we also have money budgeted for sanitation services for those tourist events, and we also use a portion of that for maintenance and repair of the visitor's center.
This is one of those funds that the state has basically outlined a very, uh, how we can use those funds, correct?
Yes, it's a very narrow, it's a very narrow outline of, very narrow outline of exactly, exactly what we can use them for. Um, you know, I think this year, they added some taxable percentage you could do for convention centers, and I think they expanded that, um, definition to conference, business and conference centers. So, really, the county does have the opportunity to impose that tax, uh, for, for the business and conference center. Um, you know, that's one way of, of starting to move in that direction, of getting a little bit more, more of a tourist to help support those different types of activities. But yes, it's, it's very narrow, and, and that's why, you know, we, we stuck to tourist activities only, and, and then it does specifically say fire, sanitation, and tourist facilities, the visitor's center and the museum, is what we, what we've done. And, and with that, um, do you have any questions or any distant comments on what we, we might want to see in the future?
No, just, just keep working on it, uh, look forward to seeing, uh, what we're going to be finally voting on at some point, uh, but, uh, continue to, to work on it, and as the numbers get a little bit closer to, to year end, and, and you start honing those numbers, let's see what we can do with, uh, some of those shortfalls we have.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, approval, disapproval of notice of intent, uh, ordinance number 1229, and ordinance amending town ordinance number 722, that was passed, adopted, and approved by the governing body of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, on August 30th, 1984, relating to the imposition of fourth increment of municipal grocery receipts tax. Alex?
Well, as we've been discussing throughout this budget presentation, basically, what this ordinance does is, it takes the current fourth increment that, that was imposed back in 1984, and was solely dedicated to the water sewer fund. Back in 2011, we, we, it's a quarter percent, actually, this, this increment. We took a ninth of that and used it as the dedication, and it's being used to pay the 2011 A bonds, and, um, we still had an eighth of a percent remaining in the water sewer fund. What this does is, is it splits out the one eighth to continue to pay the debt service, and then it takes one sixteenth, puts it in the general fund, and one sixteenth, that puts it in the street maintenance fund. And, and, and the reason, you know, we can transfer the gross receipts taxes between funds, but the reason that, that I, I chose to do this by ordinance is because I want to try to bind, bind us to, to make us think and continue to think that we've got to put that one sixteenth into the street maintenance fund all the time. And then, that's the main reason for us doing this one.
Any questions? Comments? Well, and you, and you, you went over that in, in detail as we, as we were going through the budget process, so, and, and I agree, we, we absolutely need to do something with our straits, um, going seven years without chip seal or any other major improvements outside of grants that we've received, and we've received a few, a, a very small number. Um, we definitely need to move in this direction, in my opinion. Uh, Councilor Beresin?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve notice of intent number 1229, and ordinance amending town ordinance number 722 that was passed and adopted and approved by the governing body of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, on August 30th, 1984, relating to the imposition of fourth increment of municipal grocery receipts tax.
Councilor Beresin?
Mr. Mayor, second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of notice of intent ordinance number 1229, ordinance amending town ordinance number 722 that was passed, adopted, and approved by the governing body of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, on August 30th, 1984, relating to the imposition of, uh, one-fourth increment, uh, municipal grocery receipts tax. Uh, any further comments? Councilor Beresin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate that the, um, this is not a new tax, it's a tax that's in place, and that's simply a rededication of a portion of that tax, um, to the, the two funds that were mentioned.
Yes, yes, again, it's already been dedicated, we moved part of it already to the debt service in 2011, we're just moving that same, uh, additional increment, we're splitting it up into those two different places, but it's the same tax that we've had since 1984.
Correct, thank you.
Uh, thank you for that comment. It is, it is an important comment, because we're, we're trying to look, uh, really outside that box to, to try to meet our needs, uh, without further burdening our, our citizens. As some of your comments may have indicated, it's, it's very possible that the county's going to be going up on, on tax, um, it's hard to blame them. But, uh, anything we do in addition to that is just further burdening our, our local taxpayers, and, and I appreciate, uh, your efforts in trying to, uh, to, to do as much as you can with what we have, continuing to work within our, our means. Further comments, discussion? We have a motion and a second for approval of notice of intent ordinance number 1229, and ordinance amending town ordinance number 722 that was passed, adopted, and approved by the governing body of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, on August 30th, 1984, relating to the imposition of fourth increment of municipal grocery receipts tax. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1230, and ordinance amending chapter 16, article 2, economic development plan, sections 16 through 21, 16, uh, 16 dash 68, 16 dash 69, and 16 dash 72 of the Town of Silver City Code of Ordinances. I'll get to the spot real quick, as I am the sponsor. Of course, I'm going to have to hunt for it for a second, uh, please bear with me. This, uh, this has to do with our economic development plan, which, which originated out of, uh, the LIDA, uh, which is the Local Economic Development Act, um, of NMSA 1978. And when, when that act first came out, it, um, it, it very, uh, it was very limited in scope in what it allowed for monies to be spent, uh, spent on. And, uh, in many cases, if we were to spend on economic development, we had to, uh, very strictly define, uh, the uses, and had to identify the actual number of job growth or, or projected number of job growth. So, it's very limited, very difficult to, to, uh, to win funds here and to spend local, local funds for something that could really benefit us. Well, in, in recent history, uh, within the last few years, uh, the state expanded that to include, um, arts and cultural district, uh, projects, cultural facilities, and, and such, uh, with a full understanding that as, as you spend money in those areas, you, you clearly, um, build your economy, your, your grocery receipts tax base, and you do indirectly grow jobs, uh, through a, a more vibrant economy. And, and it's very important, because this allows us to, to, uh, to look at, at building those, those facilities and, and increasing our opportunity for economic growth without having to prove how many jobs are actually going to be created. And what I'm looking for in, in this, uh, this amendment is to allow us to, uh, to, to both match what the state statute allows, and also increase our opportunities, increase our toolbox, and, uh, hopefully, if we're able to get funding, uh, under LIDA grants, um, due to this, then the citizens benefit, because we're, we're bringing money back down from the state to, to use for our benefit. We, we have the, the, uh, the Main Street Director here, um, he may have some insight on this, this, this is something, uh, uh, Main Street's closely tied to the Arts and Cultural District, and it was when the Arts and Cultural District was developed is when, uh, the, the act was changed at the, the state level. Um, and I'm sure if anybody has any questions, either I, Alex, or, or Francis, the Main Street Director could help, uh, articulate some of that. I'm a big fan of this, I, I want to increase all the tool, I want to put as many tools in our toolbox as possible to help further us in, in, uh, meeting our goals, especially if it can bring money back from the state, especially in a time when they like to take as money, as much money back as possible, so. So, I'm, I'm hoping that, um, the council will move it forward. Councilor Beresin?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve notice of intent ordinance number 1230, and ordinance amending chapter 16, article 2, economic development plan, section 16 dash 21, 16 dash 68, 16 dash 69, and 16 dash 72 of the Town of Silver City Code of Ordinances.
We have a motion and a second for approval of notice of intent ordinance number 1230, and ordinance amending chapter 16, article 2, economic development plan, sections 16 dash 21, 16 dash 68, 16 dash 69, and 16 dash 72 of the Town of Silver City Code of Ordinances. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an appointment to the museum board. We have an application to, uh, for reappointment of Susan Musgrove, um, she's currently the vice president, uh, of the board, and, um, comes highly recommended, and if there's no objection, I will reappoint her.
No objection, no objection.
Uh, Susan Musgrove is reappointed. The last item on the agenda, if anybody is interested.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to return.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.